We are recording these budget hearings, so everything said is recorded for future use if needed. This is the first of possibly-
Will it be on the website?
It'd be on our YouTube channel, which is linked through the website. This is our first of possibly three budget hearings. We have this one scheduled for 6:00 PM, one on Wednesday, same place, same locate, or same time, 6:00 PM. And then if necessary, we have one scheduled for Thursday at 5:00 PM. Now, if we need to go further, we can certainly do more meetings, but ideally we get this done in three meetings, possibly two. Really, state law requires we have our budget put together and the appropriation limits ready to go by September 1st.
First meeting in September?
Yep, so we've got some time for what happens still. If we get this done sooner, that works to make it better with some council members' schedules. And also, it's behind us, and we're starting to head to this fall and then next year. With that, ladies first, is that all right, Greg? If you want to present up here in this courtroom standing is a good spot. I'll turn this off, so it's not going to blind you. You'll be good to y'all. Just so you know, the council is positioned around here with the mayor- This can actually be off the table for tonight.
Okay.
So Skyler was gonna call in, but he's here.
You want out.
I do one house.
Well, thank you for letting me come this evening. I have still the information that was requested. You have our request form, a little bit about Prairie Hills transit. I think the important thing to know is that we've been a presence in Hot Springs since 2002. We're in the midst of our 14th year, but I wanted to, I think, thank all of you. I don't think, but familiar faces, new faces, and take note that I didn't say old faces, because people say that all the time to me, and I just had a birthday yesterday, so my face is older even. But last year, we had a reduction in funding from $10,000 to $5,000. I want to tell you that's made it very difficult for us in the Hot Springs community. The ESA group has stepped up. They've been working on some fundraising. They have a $1,000 check to give us, but that was also matched by Modern Woodman. So we're up to now a $7,000 level of local match rather than the $10,000 that we need. We're squeezing every penny to try to make it to the end of the year. That's this year's budget. We came back in asking you for reinstatement of the $10,000, because that's really what we need to operate in Hot Springs. We have two buses, two drivers. We really could bump it up to three drivers and three buses, at least part-time, to maintain the level of service that your community really wants and has come to expect. And I think Greg is a big advocate for his residents really are ones that want and expect. So, but to tell you how we help supplement the funding that we receive. We are an agency that is funded through the federal government, channeled through the South Dakota DOT. We get some state dollars from the state of South Dakota. We get some older Americans Act money, which also funds the senior meals program, but a little tiny part of transportation. We go to the United Way, and the United Way for the Southern Hills dollars are divided between Hot Springs, Custer, and Edgemont. So each month, there's a $200 to $300 match that goes toward Hot Springs. The veterans, and Mayor Donald asked me about this, but we work closely with the VA here. And there was a highly rural grant that came out a couple of years ago. And what that does is help fund transportation for veterans living in communities like Hot Springs. It will fund their trips if they're requested, so we can get them to specialty appointments that may not be available at the VA. But there's also one gentleman who goes to dialysis three times a week that benefits from those funds. While I'm talking about dialysis quick, we have one person under 60 who pays a fare of $4 for the daily trip. We have another person that's a senior who gives a donation. So fares and donations are another way that we help support the budget. No, I mean, you're gonna give me a high five or something when I need to be done talking.
You have about the two minutes or so, a minute and a half.
Okay.
Then after that, questions to answer.
Okay. The folks that we worked out with ESA and in that group were Deanna Arneson and Amber Heintert. I haven't met Amber, but so if you know those gals, please thank them, because that was a huge help for us. What we asked for this year was $10,000 in operating dollars. And if you have questions about that, this is the place to ask me. But we also asked for replacement of the second vehicle that we have here. And I will tell you that it's older, it's a 2003, it's got 175,000 miles on it. Those trip, those vehicles do go back and forth to Rapid for specialty appointments. And they're very well-maintained, but come on, guys, they're 13 years old and they break down. So we want your residents to be as safe as they can be. We have contracts with, for instance, Black Hills Special Services. We do a lot of their transportation for the people that they support on a daily basis. And many of those individuals are in wheelchairs. And for those of you that were on the council a couple of years ago, when you helped us replace the other bus, it now has four wheelchair stations, so we can get those people where they need to go. And I don't mean those people in a derogatory manner, but the individuals in wheelchairs requiring assistance. I talked fast, I talked about money, but the drivers are both located here. We have a third part-time driver that we rotate. If you're the chief of police, I don't think you've heard any problems with any of our drivers. That's a good thing. They all have a significant amount of training before we put them on the road. And then after they've been on the road for about 90 days, they go through a national certification course. So we give them a lot of training. And now I'm gonna open it up to questions. Yes?
How many students do you transport, do you know? Because a lot of times, they will use it, I think.
Yeah, and we advertise this year for your summer programs, but they would be in the public riders. And I'm sorry, it's not broken out by youth and people under 60, but there were 228 total. And sometimes, meetings like this, and Mayor Donald sits on the advisory board for transit in Hot Springs, those kinds of boards are members of the community. You folks are the ones that are out there and can help us get the word out. We do a significant amount of advertising, we've got a website, you know, Facebook, all those kinds of things. But yeah, by all means, it's a great way for parents to utilize public transportation. And our buses have seatbelts and security cameras.
Now, do you have anything to do with any of the transportation in Rapid that you know is that they're having their kids picked up even by transit?
We cannot operate within the Rapid City limits, because they have an urban system that gives a totally different kind of funding. But we can take people into and out of, and we do a significant amount of that. We also do the discharge contract for regional and Rapid, which means lots of times there are individuals that don't have a way home from the hospital. And we will be their trip home. And some of those are coming back to Hot Springs, they keep a pretty close eye on them.
I know we did make sure at one time to help you buy your bus, and that was- And then we requested that your people, your drivers would live here, because some, for a while, they were going back and forth driving.
Sometimes, sometimes we couldn't find people that lived here.
Yeah, right. So I'm glad to hear you've got drivers that are living here now.
The last bus was purchased in 2014, so it's only a couple of years old, and it's got about 28,000 miles on it. So, you know, they have a fairly long lifetime. The 2003s, we have a ton of those, because back in that era, Governor Janklow pulled some tricks and came up with vehicles that he could give to every agency you're in, and you probably know. But he gave about 219 vehicles out to agencies across South Dakota. We do the Pine Hills Transportation, Seven Sisters, the hospital or nursing home. I, you know, if there's anybody that needs transportation, we're willing to help them and try to do-
Have you talked to the schools at all? Because I know within the school year, a lot of times, they don't get transportation to the school, I mean, kids that live in town, because there's no but. It's supposed to be three to five miles, I think, outside of city limits.
I have not.
And I was just gonna say, that might be an idea for you.
Okay, I'll follow up on that.
I have a question.
Okay.
How many buses do you have in Deadwood?
One.
Deadwood lead, just one between the both towns?
Correct, they share.
What about Custer?
Custer has two.
Custer has two. Why did they just give $100?
Who?
Custer. The cash manager.
The Custer's donations, or match, if you will, from the city and the county go directly to their advisory board. Each community is a little bit different. So they give a significant amount, more than that $100, but that's all that comes directly to us.
So it doesn't show up anywhere?
No. Good question.
And the other- Deadwood leads $4,100.
Deadwood lead is a monthly fee, so the city of Deadwood, their $5,000 local match won't show on there. And the city of Lead gives their match in a monthly check. Again, every community does it differently. So Deadwood lead will end up being about $13,000.
Okay, where is that going to be?
Well, it won't show until we actually have the dollars in the bank. So the city of Deadwood's check has not been sent. And the city of Leads is probably all you're seeing on that financial.
Right.
Because that's about half a year's worth of financial. Thank you. You're back.
Have any of the kids used it for summer rec, like you tried to?
No. No, and you know, sometimes it just takes, I know Julie Hill's grandchildren over here, they used it to get to different summer activities. We still have a grant that we were willing to help get those kids to summer rec programs. So we put flyers, took them to the school, talked to the principal about it. The flyers were supposed to go home with every child. It's kind of new and different, I guess. It takes maybe some parents to get it started and see how well it works for them.
There's always a little fear factor of sending kids to something, probably, that's not gonna-
Absolutely.
I know Rapid City is doing that, and my grandkids live over there, and it was one of those issues, should I let them on the bus or not?
And you know, the United Way in Rapid talks to us often about the lack of transportation for school-aged children. I can't do anything about it in Rapid City, but in Spearfish, we have about 300 school-aged children that use our bus, simply because we'll pick them up, the daycare is taken to school, take them to their activities after school. And again, we have seatbelts, we have security cameras, and every child's name is on a manifest on their tablet. So if your grandson doesn't show up, and my driver gets there, and Joey hasn't shown up, they'll call back into dispatch, and we start on the emergency contact before we ever leave the school. Joey hasn't come out, did mom take him up, you know, to school, know where he is. And so parents really appreciate that and become very good at letting us know where Joey is. Mayor Donald, you have a question?
I don't think so. I don't think so. I don't like that.
Final questions?
I have two questions. $10,000 plus capital funding for vehicle replacement, 14. Are you requesting 14 or 24?
Yes, 24. I'm sorry. Now, in the spirit of full disclosure, I did go to the county, and I did ask them for funding. And they've been very good about maintaining the level of funding that we have asked. But I asked them for partial funding for vehicle for Hot Springs, keeping in mind that they also provide funding for Edgemont.
And my second question. I found out via an email from Misty this morning that I'm actually a Hot Springs city employee. And you indicate that some Hot Springs employees are involved with your organization, are any of those employees on the council?
Did you say out of?
No. I'm not quite sure what you're asking me, but Cindy reconsider a employee of the city of Hot Springs. She sits on our advisory board.
Not exactly an employee?
No, well, okay.
Okay, so that's just-
So if I, I'm not answering your question correctly, am I?
Well, are any of the Hot Springs, city of Hot Springs employees involved with your organization? My question to you was, are any of the council members as employees involved with your organization?
No.
Thank you.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. And again, I appreciate all you do. I know you guys have a tough job, and please look favorably upon for the asset, and more money this year, it should be helpful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming in.
In case you don't know, break bounce for the Hot Springs elderly meals program. Except for Skyler and Bob, I think you all have been through this process with baby board. What I provided to Misty for this afternoon, through the packet, is a pretty simple explanation or financial statement. The fiscal year for Western South Dakota Senior Services, which is the parent organization of our program, the fiscal year, seven months or 630. So the numbers that are here are pretty much a 12-month number. Best estimate of the director of Rapid, George Larson, for what the numbers are. But they do represent a 12-month period. The, again, what we talked about in January is that all of the participant fees that come in, listed as participant donations. We do not charge anything for the meals, they're all on a donation basis. And so for the two, for both Congress and Home Delivery, the 12-month period, there's almost $27,000, 26.7, I guess. Which represents a $0.74 per meal, which is down a little bit from what we got in January, about a report for last year. The $10,500 match from local sources is $7,000 from you all, and then $3,500 for the county. So that was the income for the fiscal, and that was the same thing in calendar 16 and calendar 15. So for both county and cities, that's why I can say it's 10.5 for the 12-month period, so 1.630. As we talked about, and I've talked about for years, our main problems are meal costs. We do not have our own kitchen here in town. We are relying upon Aviance at the state home to provide meals. And as you see there, it's just under $7 per meal. We did serve a total of 15,366 meals during that 12-month period. And that's an average of 61 meals a day, just under 61 meals a day. So the 6.94, we know that's our biggest problem. And while I can't give you details tonight, we do plan on making changes on that during the next fiscal year of ours. We're actually, we're in negotiations right now with a Custer program to provide meals and then drive them down here for Hot Springs people. Our costs then could significantly decrease, and meal costs. I can stand here before you tonight and say that if that happens, when that happens, we could possibly, very easily refund some of the grant to the city, which we would gladly do, because we know you're under constraints also. Don't know how much we could do that, but that depends on when we do that transfer. George Larson has talked about doing that before the beginning of the winter. So hopefully, it'll be more than half a year. And so we can look at that down the road. That's a simple statement, according to the Form for Budgetary Funding Request Form. If you want an audit report for the Western South Dakota Senior Services, here's the whole thing, one for June 30th or 15th, obviously 16 is not done yet. But if any of you would like to have this to read through, this would be not only Hot Springs, but also Edgemont, Custer. I think there's 10 sites in Rapid City, and then Faith, and Newell, and Outlying. So it's all included in here, nothing is split up for Hot Springs. So if you want it to look at, see what was-
Can you just give that copy to Misty? And she can share it with council if they want? Thank you.
Absolutely, that'd be fine. I guess the bottom line for me tonight is that the $2.28 per meal that we lost in this report, in this financial statement, is made up by Western South Dakota Senior Services. They don't include it on our income statement, because they want to know what our actual costs are based upon the revenue and expenses that we have in program here. We're not going under, we're not closing anytime soon. But they would like it, that's why George Larson wants to seek other options for meals contract. So we do that, we'd be in much better shape. Questions, any of you?
George Larson is who now?
He's the executive director of Western South Dakota Senior Services. He's been there now two years, took over from Marcia, who had been there for 20. She's been there as long as Barbara's been on Prairie Hills, but she retired, and George Larson came in. He's doing a really wonderful job.
And he's located where?
He's at Rapid. In the past, their EB has come down to make this presentation. I feel comfortable and capable of doing it.
We recognize you.
You know, that's, I think that's personally nice, you know, when we're dealing here.
Well, you have a good handle on what's going on.
Anybody else? Thank you so much.
Thank you. There are both things today, Greg.
Pardon?
I said, thanks for both issues today.
Not both, not both.
Did you have CDM before Aviance?
Siggy?
Did you have CDM before Aviance?
No, we changed from the VAs to Aviance.
They're back up at the school now.
Aviance?
Or?
Yeah, CDM, yeah.
Oh, both.
So you might want to talk to them about it.
Really, you're both?
Thank you.
It goes off after 5:00. We're gonna get cranky here pretty quick.
We can set a fan up in the hallway.
They just wouldn't find it?
I'm sure.
Yeah. I'm gonna shoot it in. I think you're sitting there. Help me have, you know. Between here and those meals that they have too, so they're up here.
I'm by your person. I've got about 62 kids I can chase around.
What is that, the payroll?
I'll start.
Like you don't have employees, and what do you have to worry about? So that's just the way it sounds like anyone told them, and then you do your A and B, so maybe there's air, maybe there's-
You want to go next?
Yeah, we'll do Mike, and then Ed from the airport is here also, so we'll go Mike first, and then Ed. Mike, before you dive in, I'll just kind of give a brief overview. How we went about formulating the budget sketch, we'll call the outline you guys have right now a sketch. Subject to change based on what you guys decide in these meetings. But the way we went about this is you first look at revenue. What are we gonna take in? What are we projecting to take in in 2017? What is our ceiling as to what we can spend? From revenue, we work backward, filling in the blanks for expenses. Our ultimate goal is to not create a scenario where we spend more than we take in. Or a scenario where we have to borrow from our fund balances just to keep the lights on. We need to borrow from our cash reserves to cover operating costs. Whereas, more reasonable to use cash reserves when you have one-time capital costs or non-recurring expenses. So you see in your outline where we have capital costs, like LED conversions, vehicle purchases, asphalt repair, things like that as a one-time expense versus operating costs, which is like salaries, utilities, things of that nature. So that gives an idea, we start with expenses, work backward towards, start with revenue, work backwards towards expenses. Our ultimate goal is not borrow against our cash reserves just to keep the lights on. If you do that year after year, that's what causes a structural deficit, leading a town to go broke. If you guys recall, 2014's budget, 2015's budget, we did use our cash reserves, AKA unassigned fund balances, to cover operating costs. 16 budget did not do this, 17's budget, we're seeking the same thing. We are not in a period of depression in Hot Springs. We don't need to borrow against our reserve balances just to maintain day-to-day operations. Where we borrow against those balances is for one-time improvements or costs that hopefully lower future expenses, like LED conversion. So with that, I'm gonna go ahead and hit this light, so it's a bit more-
Don't turn it down too much, because we can't see this book.
Okay, I can bring out some more. Basically, I want to make sure that you guys are able to see the screen, see your papers. If it'd be more like Caroline, just say so, then you get more light. So Mike, do you want me to show the proposed budget, or the one that you developed, what we got for your purposes?
Well, let's put up the proposed, and then I honestly just have a few changes to those.
Okay. So what we're about to look at is what you guys have in your packets right now for the police department.
Does anyone know what page that's on?
Seven.
That's seven of the Bannion reports, but it might be a different page than the report, but they should be the same.
Yeah, same numbers. So this is Department 42100, the police department.
But it doesn't have the year-to-date numbers on the screen.
No, it does not. This is where we get into the Excel spreadsheet, it's 100% separate of the Bannion reports that Misty generates.
But they should match, except your Bannion reports will have the year-to-date amounts.
What this has, a Bannion doesn't, is the notes next to certain line items to give further clarification.
And more years of history.
Yes, it also includes 13 and other years too. All right, with that, sorry, Mike, I'm gonna just do that.
Can I ask you a question? Could you have entered the year-to-date?
We certainly, I mean, it's-
I mean, didn't you enter all these, though? Next year, couldn't you-
Well, I entered all these last year, and I updated 16, but the year-to-date does change with every time we pay the bills. So I'd have to-
She got, well, couldn't you enter that?
It'd be a lot of manual entry.
It wouldn't be current. Because it is really important to know the percentage you've spent.
And you guys do have that, that's what I said, you do have it, it's just in a separate report, but it's still available to consult.
Thank you.
I could, did I just question this, I could? It'd be about two days' worth of work, or a number that's about-
You like to work.
I like to work on other stuff, too. I might.
So last year, I came in shooting for the Stars, learn, you know, with the, with the expenses that the city has. This year, honestly, a few of the things we're asking is on supplies. The, that's one of the numbers there, 1,500 for training. For the ammo for training, now that we have ARs, we were hoping to get that number a little bit higher, because the AR ammunition itself is gonna be just under 1,500. The equipment, the AR mounts. That way, we can store safely the ARs in our vehicles.
Are these amounts adequate? Are you just kind of covering what you're asking for them for, or are you asking increases?
This is the precise number for the non-safely.
What number is that, your equipment you're looking at?
Over 2520?
Right under building repairs.
We're 2530.
2530?
Yes.
So that's why you're asking for so much more?
Yeah, just for the AR mounts, that's the exact amount of the AR mounts, nothing on top of that.
So you have to have them?
What's that?
Do you have to have these? I don't even know, I don't know what an AR mount is.
Basically, the AR mount is, it's gonna be a locking mechanism in our vehicles, so that nobody can get the gun out of our car except for us.
So think of it between the driver's seat and the passenger seat, there'd be an upright console, you set your gun in, it doesn't lock. And with this model, is it a manual or is it battery-wired?
This is a battery-wired one. In a stressful situation, you're gonna lose your fine motor skills. That involves putting a key into a lock, turning the lock, pulling it out. Stressful situation where seconds count, it's a lot easier to hit the button, pop it out.
What is it?
What is it? I saw in the news that Dallas Police Department, it doesn't have cameras on their officers, and we do.
We have two cameras in the whole department.
We do have them, right.
And we are working on a grant currently to get cameras for other officers.
And that's, I mean, we can get into that.
No, that's just a question, I mean, because we are well-equipped, or I think we're getting well-equipped.
Two of our officers have their cameras, and they sometimes work their $100 Winchester model. The camera that was in our recent shooting was invaluable, absolutely invaluable. It saved an officer's reputation, it saved the city a lot. It saved an officer's reputation, it saved the city a lot. In an instance like that, if you wouldn't have had that camera on, there would have been a lot of what-ifs.
Are there cameras in this budget?
No, we're following grants right now. Basically with the AG Fund, what happens is all the drug busts that are made in the state, all that money goes into the AG Fund and then from there it disperses the money out. Right now that contingency is pretty low, so we're waiting for it to build back up.
We do have the rally coming up, which will help.
Which will definitely help. Another camera issue, another camera issue is our patrol cameras. We have three that work great, one that works when it wants to and the rest are not functioning. Last year we asked for patrol cameras. Fortunately, we didn't get them, but what we are doing through Homeland Security is we're chasing that grant. It's about $40,000 grant. Saves the city. With that money, if we, there's many, more than more grants we can get, the better our budget looks. We had another issue this year with patrol camera, where if that wouldn't have been on, it would have been an officer's reputation ruined and we would have another issue. So those two things right there are invaluable and we're waiting.
Can I just back you up for a minute?
Yes.
Okay, you said the, going back to the, what you're asking for, that mountain.
The AR mounts, the gun mounts.
You said that instead of a key lock or something, this would be automatic, but.
With a button.
With a button, is that like with a thumbprint?
No.
Can anybody?
No, it's, you said it's different variations of keys in the car. There's just different variations and being recorded, I don't want to go into exactly how to get them out of my car.
I'm saying you can call, back and back, it is locked and only.
You just can't get my vehicle out.
All right, that's what I wanted. I thought, well.
It's just a very good question.
Stop running off.
The big red button. You are hard and criminal.
Okay, thank you. And then you can go back and I just didn't understand that.
No, no problem. And then you go down to cell phones. Right now, only the captain and I have cell phones. I have a smartphone basically because if I'm not in my, I ask Nolan and Misty and the mayor will email me throughout the day. If I'm not in my office, I'm not gonna get back to them until I get back there and sometimes that might not be all day. So that's why I do have a smartphone. For the rest of the officers, basically what they need is a basic phone, they're not using their minutes up. But they get calls all times of the day. Their patrol cars are their office, they spend more time in those cars, I hope, than the actual office. A lot of times dispatch will call and say, "Hey, we have a reporting party that needs a call. Can you call this officer in a different jurisdiction?" There's a lot of time spent on a phone, so I would like to see all the officers have a phone. They don't have to have a smartphone, but I believe they should have a phone issued by the city. Those would be for work purposes only. That's why they don't need smartphones, they don't need to be checking the internet. If they have something like that, they can always go back to the office for it.
In exchange, you're gonna be limiting the number of lines you have at the police department too, right?
Correct, we'll be going down to two lines. That way, we'll just have better contact. A lot of times in the office, I went, during working hours, it's me and Trudy. Very rarely are we both on the phone at the same time. The rest of the officers are out and about at night, you know, Trudy leaves at 4:30. We're not gonna have three or four officers on the phone at that time.
And this budget doesn't reflect the car, the, the new car?
That is.
It does partially actually.
Does it?
Yeah, under machinery. You've got 10,500 coming out of the actual 2017 101 Police Department budget. And then that's gonna be planned to be supplemented with 30,000. To get 40,500 for what's being proposed is a police truck. Now, deviating from a sedan proposed, for the purpose of when this truck is ready to be retired from the police department, it can then be cycled into our other departments, say a maintenance truck or a parks truck. At the end, if it's usable police life, we can then use it for a different department.
What kind of truck are you using?
A lot of police departments are using this.
What kind of truck are you using?
Ford or truck, most likely a Ford, heck, a Lincoln style.
Something hundred making.
Mike, can you step over there?
Yeah, definitely.
Now, if you look at the state bid list, they've put out the Ford vehicle, Dodge vehicle, and a Chevy. Chevy tends to be higher, Dodge is more reasonable, as is the Ford. I think Dodge actually looked at it.
Is this for the car? If it's not for the car that they just bought?
No.
Hopefully, nobody has their windows down. It's a lane or anything here.
Oh, it is?
My windows, my windows are down.
Mike, I had a couple of questions.
Yes.
On equipment repairs.
That's 42530.
Right. Is there some reason why it's gonna be more?
Yeah, the AR mounts.
The AR mounts.
That's the AR thing, okay. Supplies, 4,000, 4,500 in '14, in '17, 9,000? Why has that gone up so much?
That's what the ammo for the training comes into.
That, yeah.
They bought your ARs out of that too.
Yeah, this year I believe that was where ARs were.
But that's for '17, we already bought them, so what are we gonna, 9,000 for '17?
That's a question for Mike.
With the, with the supplies, a lot of that is the office supplies. We, our supplies are dictated by.
Evidence tape?
What happens, how on the street, it's evidence tape, it's citations. And I know there was a few questions on those citations and today I saw a report that greatly reflected why we needed those multiple offense citations. One gentleman was arrested for six offenses. In the old days, we would have had, right, six separate tickets. Now it's two, it's, we completely fill out one, the three offenses, and the next one you fill out three offenses and you're done.
It's still a lot to go from 4,500 to 9,000.
With the, and 30, 2,500 of it would be for the ammo. But in those supplies, we print a lot of reports. Every day we have reports going somewhere. Those are pretty much the supplies that involve into the office, that's. If you like, that's, that's just a hard number to put on what we're gonna use.
Well, you've got your, your year-to-date amount as.
Careful on that door, Mike.
You know, $10,631, is that, was that a big purchase?
That was the ARs, I think.
That would be the AR.
About 7,700 or 7,800.
Well, no, that was up there, that was under 42530, this is 4610, this is supplies.
No, it's not under 42530, that's the mounts. And we're talking about the purchase of the assault, or, they're not assault rifles, of the ARs this year when we brought them.
And that's under supplies?
Yes.
Okay. All right, and what about clothing? You've gone from 2,500 to 6,500.
That was because each officer gets $600. Back then they didn't get the $600 amount. Also, we have to run into the issue where if we have to fully equip a new officer, it's about $1,800.
So they weren't doing that in 2014, they weren't buying uniforms?
They weren't buying, we didn't have a $600 allowance, I believe it was 200, which buys you a pair of boots and a pair of pants.
Mike has done a good, I had to, this little bit, Mike has done a good job of recording what's going out, what's coming back. So if we ever have an officer, apart from the HSPD, we get back all usable equipment to reissue existing officers, reserve officers, or the new officers. So that is one area we've improved our accountability from the previous regime.
And we do with the new officers, just about everything is transferable except the duty belt. You know, a guy is smaller than me, can't wear mine, I can't wear his. The vests also are not transferable.
They also expire.
They expire four years and I don't want to wear somebody else's vest.
They're like $700 and they only last four years, so what about them expires?
The rating on, the material, basically.
Breaks down.
You can get like a motorcycle helmet.
And.
You can replace it after several years because if it is tested, if it is tested, it's not guaranteed.
And if it ever actually is, if it ever does take a shot, it's done, it's out of commission. And with those.
We don't want that either.
Everybody, you know, a lot of people think that they're knife resistant, which they're not. They're handgun, that's what they are. Level three, you see some of the guys, they, I mean, they look like they're, they really work out, it's just their level three vest and it's huge.
No, they don't.
I mean, yeah, they, they always work out. The level one is a more comfortable vest. The price is, I mean, up to, up to $700 and it's one of those things that, that we have to have. The only, from the bottom number we have.
Are there eight officers that get equipped with the clothing budget of 600?
Uh, seven. So, right now we have the bottom number from everything I've just explained, it's the 556.
I've got two more questions.
Okay.
Okay. Janitorial supplies, we've got $900, that was in '14, we've got 400 so far this year. You asked for $1,600 in janitorial supplies.
16, it's that amount, 17, it's 1,000.
Okay, I know, I'm just wondering why you asked for that much.
Cutting corners to help the budget.
Okay. All right. Gas and diesel. You used what, 5,000 so far this year? Of $22,000 on the gas?
Yeah, so we've lowered it. The gas fuel, it all depends on price, it goes up and down, depends on if we have somebody going to the academy, what officer works what shift.
That's pretty bad.
There's a lot of variables in it.
Traveling conferences, $100 in '14 and 3,000 in '17?
Because we want to become a better department training-wise. Back then it was, if it wasn't at peer, you're not going. Peer, don't get me wrong.
But you have to go out of the state, I mean, don't they have good training here?
Not all the trainings we need, no.
You went last year.
I went last year.
So.
And that was, that was an exceptional training.
Does that mean you have to go every year to some specific training?
I'm not saying that I'm gonna go every year, but if we have an exceptional officer that is, that is great work in the narcotics and there's a narcotic training in Wyoming that South Dakota doesn't offer, that's gonna help the community, I think we need to get officers out there and get them trained.
Right, but you did that with 2,000 this year, right?
Correct.
All right, I don't think I have any more questions to bother you with.
No, no worries.
Actually, I have one if you don't mind.
Sure.
Uh, okay, hold on, I don't know what's on here, but not on here. Should've been back to you, leave it to me. Oh, in 2015, you had 4,600 in professional services and then you dropped it to 35. And are you, why did it go up in, like, for like $1,000 in 2015? And are, do you have ample enough funds in there to cover?
You know, I can't answer that question.
49% year-to-date in July, so I would say you have ample enough funds. And we could look back, I could pull a history, what was paid out of that 4,600.
That wasn't a budget that I put together. The 35 pays, pays the once-a-month cleaning and I believe it's.
I just don't want you to run out.
74 or 255 or 60 or something.
I just don't want you to run out.
Nope. Couple of the ones that, the numbers that I'd like to see adjusted, depending on the council's vote, the top known. Salaries, the cost of living does come into play. I know there's four officers coming in for step increases. I'd like to see that number at 359.
What is it you're asking us to do?
Raise it by 4,000?
I know, with who, what, and step, I mean, steps or what?
If the cost of living increase does get approved and there's four officers, I know that this year we'll be getting step increases, so that's gonna raise the amount.
Okay.
We did a pretty good calculation and added the stepping increases of everyone for the whole year, so there's a little cushion there for overtime because they're obviously not gonna have the whole year. Added in a COLA and came up with a number to come up with the budget figure.
So we already did that.
What's, what did we figure, or what'd you guys figure for overtime?
Nothing, there's a cushion.
Yeah, this is the precise number, Mike, and every officer works, or everybody, including Sherry, works 20, 80. That's your 40-hour work week. And we have night differential pay, which we'll adjust it there, and then we also have overtime, which is inevitable with the police department, so this is the.
But not completely uncontrollable.
Correct, this is the baseline, 20, 80, and then the difference between the two would be at 25,000.
And the issue with the, with the overtime for the police department is unfortunately, we get called five minutes for off shift, we can't hit save and start the next day.
There's a 25,000, no question, is that right? Or was it only 20,000?
Training that we talked about, that's mandated by the state. Not everybody works during the day, so that, right there, will bring us some overtime.
What'd you say about mandated by the state?
Training. Largest mess that we've had, unfortunately, within the town, we had every officer except for one at the scene for about seven hours. There is a way to avoid the overtime, that just means less boots on the ground on a Friday night. I don't like having one officer out there alone on a Friday or Saturday night. I don't ever like having one officer out there. But, you know, if it becomes an issue with overtime, that's what we have to do. A lot of calls, we don't want one officer on, domestic violence being one, many alcohol related calls. That's why I'd like to see just that, that 4,000. Any questions on that one before I go to the next one?
I was going to ask another question, I think I asked it last year too, and that was your support from the VA for police. Now it's probably next to none, or what do you get, do you get anything anymore?
They won't come off the hill and help us.
They used to, I know, they would come down, pick people up for dinner and take them back.
We, every, and I had an actual breakdown of all the times, if they have a welfare check that needs done on, on a patient in our community, we do it. If they have somebody that needs a ride home from the hospital, we'll do this.
Really?
We, yeah, they don't.
You will not provide your own transportation for the veteran?
If there's somebody with a warrant out there.
Not even taking them back?
Is there a reason why?
We go arrest.
Do we, do we need to talk to them a little more?
I will be right behind you, let's go.
Because I think this is something that changes our whole atmosphere.
And unfortunately, a lot of the calls, it's, we're not gonna tell them no because a lot of the times somebody's life might be in danger. You know, if it's a suicidal subject, there is one male in particular from there that crossed the city about 30 hours of overtime over two minutes in time. But no, if, if there was any way to have the VA supplement our income, I would be, I would be right there with you.
Even just to support you and help.
But the, they've, I mean, they've made it clear, they can't cross the line. So if I'm scuffling with somebody, here's the gate, and I'm scuffling with somebody, they're not going to step across and help me.
Who's the police chief up there?
I believe his last name's Cannon.
Mike didn't talk to them soon after he became chief and they got very frustrated, so.
It was always.
I think everybody up that place is pretty frustrated.
It was, when I first started, it was, we always felt like the VA PD's whipping boy. They have a townie, as they would call it, up there raising heck, well, they'd expect us to come and take care of it because it was a town person. No, it's VA property, you're a cop, you have just as many arresting rights as I do. The one that kind of made me go up there and voice my opinion was they had a dog on their property and they wanted us to come get it. I'm not gonna do it, I'm sorry. I mean, I don't like dog carrying my vehicle as it is, so I'm not gonna go get a dog off their property. So, we might have some icy relations up there now, but we work together.
They couldn't call animal control?
They wouldn't. You know, and then there's, there's other issues with, with, with my job, the people I have to see in my office that I'm not told are up there and that's a completely different issue that I'd be more than willing to talk to you guys off the camera about, which is very frustrating.
Does it cause us to have a lot of overtime, is what I'm gonna ask you. Okay, I think that we need to address that then.
One issue that we run into a lot is if somebody fails treatment up there and they kick them out of the, off the property, they don't get a ride home, they don't get a bus ticket, cars deal with it.
Yeah, I know.
Do they give you a heads up at least?
No.
I've probably seen before he does.
We had, there was an issue there for a while where we would pick up a veteran that was in need of assistance. You know, they might be intoxicated, want to talk to somebody. We pick them up, we take them up to the VA because, you know, we're not gonna tell them no. We would take them up there and intake would tell us, no, they're not gonna take this person. So we had a nice conversation and now that doesn't happen anymore. So, yeah, that's, if, if there was any way that, that we could talk to, I'd be fully behind it. And I could bring stats, our dispatch is amazing at putting stats together. The next one is the insurance line. Now, as of date right now, we're at. Now, as of date right now, we're at fifty-three hundred for twenty sixteen.
It's a one-time fee.
What, what exactly, how does, how do they figure that?
Well, we pay like law enforcement liability insurance, that gets built to you, but it, but it's an annual fee we pay to supplement a public insurance line.
Do we know ahead of time what?
It can change based on numbers of officers and how much training you do and how you comply with their risk analysis recommendations and.
And it has gone down lately, but we have improved our methods and practices, so I don't know.
But it's not something that's gonna hit, it shouldn't hit your budget. Again, now your new car, you're gonna have insurance for that too, and I'm gonna add that on there.
That will take off.
Yeah, well, yeah, I don't think you'll see a refund, and that's been off for a while and I haven't seen a refund yet, so as soon as it went out of commission.
So that's something that the extra training can actually bring down as people do it.
The risk portion of it and how they calculate that, there's a ginormous mathematician brain somewhere that's, you know, doing risk analysis, but yeah.
Thanks for that technical.
Yeah, I'm picturing this now. So I don't know that you'll need a lot more than that, cause you shouldn't see a lot more happening.
Just that, that past four years kinda worked.
Yeah, it's tightening up, that's part, based on our change of practices and coming more compliant with regulations.
And just like our health insurance, when we renew, it can change.
That's just one of those ones that, that fear is gonna go over and then, you know, start taking away from, from other lines.
Well, that is true. Your fifty-two though is, your car's not gonna be eight hundred and you wouldn't even had the car, you know, next year when you pay your amount, it'll include the car.
So the one that's on the report you missed, is that as high, that's it for the year?
Except for because you have a car. Like, it's your, it's an annual premium that's paid and it's already updated.
So there's nothing, okay.
Group insurance, it gets done differently than that. That's, that's over the course of the year. This is a one-time stuff.
Fourteen fifty.
Higher.
Good question, Mike.
The next one is the supplies. We have fifteen for ammo. I'd like to, um, I'd like to be able to have ammo that we can go out training. We like to do dusk training, we like to do daylight. Um, the more we share our guns, the better. Unfortunately.
Does that fifteen hundred in parentheses mean that, what does the fifteen in parentheses mean?
That, that was put there, that's if that would be the amount for, for ammo.
You want an additional to the nine thousand?
No, that's included in there, Andrea.
That's included.
Mike is suggesting is that his budget line increased from this number to a higher number to, to more ammo.
Oh, I, I know, I was like, I took out fifteen hundred or.
Police officers' hourly salary when they're doing all this training.
The, uh, you know, unfortunately, we've, we've seen that our, our community is not immune to, to bigger city problems. And the better we are with the tools that we have.
What is our population now? Is it?
Thirty-seven hundred.
We're still, until they do a new census.
Five eleven to thirty-seven hundred is what it's been.
So are you asking for another, or is that why you're asking for another?
No, to put this to ten.
So there's already fifteen in there, you're asking for another thousand? There's nine in there already. Oh, I'm in.
Fifteen hundred.
I asked for another fifteen hundred.
Uh, with that, basically with that fifteen hundred, it would be the choice of, do we qualify with our ARs or do we qualify with our, our handguns? Good point, what was it? Uh, no, add one, add a thousand, so it would be a total of ten. With our recent officer-involved shooting, when we did, when the city was gracious enough to start buying us city-issue handguns. Cause when I first started, I had to buy my own, I bought it from a pawn shop. I mean, it was one of those things that did you know if it was gonna work or not? When we bought those, we bought two extras, just in case one broke. Um, well, with our OIS, um, DCI took both of the involved, took their guns and they'll have them for quite a while. So luckily, we had bought two extra, we were able to give them to officers. Eventually.
Yeah, they can't keep those.
I'll have a lot, I'll probably have a lot more gray here by the time we get those back.
Misty will go get them.
So that would, that would be that one. Um, the other one, um, covered that, that is. And with this budget, it's, it's pretty lean. Um, there's not a lot of, not a lot of room for equipment failures, replacing, um. In our job, I mean, every traffic stop we make, there's a risk of breaking something, every call we make, I'll give you a good stat. Since beginning of May, we've had about three hundred traffic stops and our rally's not even here yet. We have three officers that really love traffic, um, which is great.
We don't really get anything from it though.
We get, we get a lot of.
Cause it's on the state.
If you wanna put a dollar in front of what we get out of it, no, but what we get off the streets, um, we had a very, very good arrest, um, two weeks ago, about a pound of marijuana, handguns.
What do you need a gun for? You got handguns.
That's, that's kind of good. It's traffic sounds like a normal routine, but traffic is great, because traffic is the gateway to bigger issues. You stop for traffic, your thorough cop is able to ascertain if there's bigger things at hand besides just speeding. So traffic is a good way to make that contact. If you look at traffic compliance, that's by far our highest item. And if you look at Mike's department, previous year's numbers.
Last incident, there, there was eight shots fired, the guy's only hit him twice. I was gonna say fifteen hundred dollars ain't enough for practice hours.
But that's not a true statement, well, inaccurate statement, that's what I'm going around and we won't wanna perpetuate those inaccuracies.
And, uh, and, and with that incident, um, I've been amazed by the community. Uh, it's, it's a tough time to be a cop right now. We're all in it because we love it. Um, a lot of us are from this small town or we just love this small town. The community, the council, it's, it's been overwhelming, how supportive everybody's been for us. We had a bench made for us today.
Right next to your flower pot.
Yeah, my flower pot.
It's, it's a very nice bench.
I'm concerned that last year you asked for cameras and you didn't get them, and this year you're not asking for cameras and so you still don't have them.
They're showing grants and grants.
But it's not a given you're gonna get the grant.
I would love to put forty-eight thousand dollars on there and ask for it, but if we do that.
Body cameras, by the way.
No truck.
No truck. It, 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 it's tough. I mean, I, I'll tell you, I, I made a list of, of things.
Is that how much the M, the grant that you're asking for, forty-eight thousand, that will supply cameras for vehicles and officers? Or that is just for, what is that for?
Uh, the Homeland Security Grant is for the vehicles.
For the vehicles.
It's that, uh, three RE that I showed everybody last year, white hammer and a few, just amazing system. It shows inside the car. Through the AG Drug Fund is where we're going for the body cameras. So it's two different funds. Yeah, I, I would love, and, and that's why when I started off, I said I'm not gonna shoot for the stars this year. It was last year I put everything, everything we needed, I, I, I put on there. You know, we're in need of in-car radios, we're in need of portables, uh, we're in need of radars, um, but we kinda have to.
So is there another department?
That's, Mike understands that and that's kinda why I came to this number.
You know, that's why I didn't put a seven-hundred thousand dollar budget up there to. I mean, all that, all that stuff is needed, um, but the basis.
Do you have to prioritize what you need? What's the most important to your department? Right now, it's the cars.
From January one, or actually from starting tomorrow after the meeting, or when I know our budget is approved, you know, what's approved, I'll start documenting. Okay, this vehicle has really given us cane, top of the list. Well, something else might come up where, hey, we have no radios that are working anymore. Radios, contact dispatch comes up. So all in your, it revolves itself. Um, the vehicles are huge. Last year, uh, said we would need a, a vehicle, cause the Red Rocket was gonna, was gonna go down and it did. And I don't wanna be in that situation next year, um, or have to come begging for a vehicle when, you know, we've said, hey, it's, you know, it's gonna go.
We've talked about the Charger, correct?
Yeah.
Did you, this is a joke, but it's actually true. In New Orleans, you know what the police use for a police car?
Bicycles.
Smart cars and bicycles and those little things they're feeding, they're rode on.
Segways.
Smart cars. Same picture to Nolan.
If you think there's no room in the Charger now, try to get into a smart car.
That's what Nolan said, where does the car?
I, I would look like a clown. If I'm gonna drive one, nobody else is gonna.
Is because there are older streets in towns like New Orleans are too narrow. When I was in Puerto Rico, they used VWs because of that, just that. A regular-sized car couldn't make corners in the downtown area, cause the streets are too narrow.
And if you look at, uh, one of our reserves, Philip Shagley, he loves riding his bicycle. And he'll be on, you'll see him on the freedom trail, you'll see him up and around the city blocks on his bike. He's actually, uh, we've been in talks with Cabela's and they might donate a bike to it. I mean, fully equipped, lights and the big siren on a little bike, I mean. You know, the people he's, he's talked to, um, the community feedback's gonna be amazing on it. Community feedback to the department as a whole. Uh, I was talking to somebody today, I remember when I first started, you know, if I pulled up in my police vehicle amongst a group of teenagers, they'd all freeze. What we do wrong? You know, now if you pull up a group amongst them, they'll block you so they can come talk to you. Or you block into the schools and it's a hate market, it's not, oh gosh, who's he arresting today? But no, I, I, I would like to think that, that the budget that, that me and Nolan worked on is, is, it, it's not all that I want, but I know that every department's gonna stand up in front of you and, and say that, so. Any more questions?
Do you have your new car, right?
Hey, if you have, if you drive by the PD, it's the, the Charger sitting there waiting for, for graphics, which hopefully we'll get this week.
Couple of questions for you. Uh, the AR mounts, remember a year or two ago, uh, purchasing additional long rifles? I know it was pretty well dated. Uh, did the purpose of them change? I mean, would it have made sense to buy a mount then? I'm not opposed to it, I'm just trying to get a history and understand why mounts, if, if they were intended to be in cars, why they weren't purchased now.
Probably financial, I don't know that. It's a whole different thing to come ask for, you know, seven thousand compared to almost ten thousand. We have enough long cases that we carry them in. Um, the biggest thing with that is when we're off duty, that, that, uh, they are locked in the car, you can pick my window and you're not getting that gun out. You're not getting my radio out, you're not getting anything out of that car.
And then the new vehicle, uh, my question is for you would be the same as they were, when I spoke about replacing the Red Rocket. What year, how many miles, those kinds of things?
Uh, Nolan has this.
Yeah, it'd be a seventeen off the state bid list.
No, but please replace it.
Oh, you have a Charger.
Show that chart again, the other one.
No, we can, we can sit here and flip a coin between the Charger and the Durango. They're both, both hurting. The O eight, the one that Jason's driving. So these two right here, that vehicle right here that Jason is driving was actually purchased as a totaled vehicle. It was remanufactured, yeah. So that's, that's kinda what I'm trying to get away from is we ID you, we equip new, it lasts longer. So basically, the two that we're trying to, we wanna get rid of, that's not a police car, that's a civilian car you can buy off the street. That vehicle had a very hard life before we even got it.
Why is the other one red? Does that one also need to go?
Mileage, it's on the radar. This one's gone.
That one's gone.
Oh, that's the Red Rocket.
But I'd like to see us, when we buy new, we equip new, um.
And hopefully keep them a long time, because that equipment is expensive.
It is.
Well, I, I think seven. Part of the thinking is, and I've been in on this a little bit, Mike can back me off if I'm being too far carried away, but part of the deal now is with the pickups, if we start getting pickups for our police force in five or ten years, five years, we can take that pickup and give it to our streets or water department and then go in, as it is now, everybody runs their vehicles till they're just.
Fall apart.
Yeah, they're just moving down roads, about it. And then we end up selling them at.
Sometimes that's not a bad idea, really.
Yeah, we sell them at our auction for fifty bucks.
That's more so how it was, more so how it was. We are doing a better job the last year and a half.
You know, and, and with the trucks, they're, they're not the optimal police vehicle, but small town, I can't tell you how many times I've tried to fit a bicycle in the back of that Explorer. Or when we have somebody that won't leave town and they have a big basket that we can't fit in our cars, we can't give them a ride to wrap it. I mean, there's just situations that a truck would be very nice. Um, any other questions for me?
Well, looking down the road then, as you're replacing vehicles, are you gonna be replacing cars with trucks? Is that gonna be the direction you're going?
I would like to next year get a truck. Um, it would, basically we'll have a year trial on it to see if this is exactly what we want as, as our future vehicle. It might be two trucks in a row and then go back to a car and give the city a couple of trucks in a couple of years, you know, four or five years. A lot of it's trial and error. The trucks aren't going to be a horrible vehicle for us.
Are they less safe? I mean, do they roll easier?
They would roll easier.
To me, I think that is a safety issue.
In, in the environment that we work in, I would be more worried about, you know, the haul, we need to haul in high-speed pursuers. The car that we have now, the Charger, uh, there's a few motorcycles lately that like to try to get us to chase them. And when we have nothing, that'll compete. Charger still won't compete, I mean, you just can't catch a motorcycle, but an instance like that, how many times are we gonna be going a hundred and forty through town? The cars are great too. I mean, there's, there's so many pluses and negatives to every vehicle. I would honestly like to give a truck a try to see in the instances that we need it, I mean, it'll be there, so.
Without knowing the.
Do you have any feedback on maintenance, uh, mileage figures for some of the trucks in the car?
Talking to the sheriff, and they ride, I mean, they drive harder miles than we do out in the county, county roads. It's not really much difference.
They depreciate faster.
They do, but not if it's a Chevy. If we go Chevy, it'll just be in value.
Are they standard cabs, the standard cabs?
Uh, crew cab.
You'd have to have somebody riding it.
Not very good on icy roads.
So what's printed is a four thousand dollar increase, although with the additional four thousand and five thousand, would that nine thousand then, what you're asking for, is that going to, um, support your department for this year?
Uh, no. If, if anything breaks, we don't, I mean, we'll be picking and choosing of, of where we're going to.
Move money?
To take it from. Um, you know, we, we train in the gun jam, so we don't have the backup DCI yet. There's a, you know, a four hundred dollar gun. Um, AR breaks, there's a seven hundred dollar gun. The radios that we have, we have one per officer, if that breaks, you know, that's a thousand dollars. Um, there's just no room for, for error.
Do you have any backup, like an extra radio or anything?
AR.
Any of those things?
We're down to bear.
But you're not all on duty all the time, so you could give them, if, if one of your duty officer.
Like car, since we were down in cars, so we could makeshift, fill the void. Mike donated his car and they upgraded the, that vehicle. Probably got back in the service, something else.
And the thing with the equipment though, is if we have another incident like we did, do we want only five radio officers with radio contact that have seen like that? Do we want only five guys that can contact dispatch? If we have something at the school, do we want only five guys that can let dispatch know where they're at and two are left? Hope they either read these and hope they can culture it.
Any final questions for Mike?
The AR mounts could go into another va- vehicle then, after you're done with one vehicle.
Those will be pretty transferable.
That's one thing that we were talking about. How much can you actually move from one vehicle to the next?
The AR mounts, there's, there's very few vehicles in the range that we have vehicles, cause we won't be buying any more Durangos. There's ve- there's AR, these AR mounts, um, are, are very transferable. They'll pretty much go with the officer and the gun, because when the officer leaves, let's say our lowest officer gets in a vehicle, um, that vehicle is gonna go to the, to the sale barn, that AR comes out with his patrol rifle. And it's AR per officer, it's not a community of, of grab. It's not a community of, of grab, oh, come on here. But the nice thing, being the department size that we are, everybody having their own car, everybody having their own equipment, when you get that call at one nineteen in the morning, like I did, and I'm sleeping, I have to jump out of bed. My duty belt is in the patrol vehicle that's in, on the scene. I have to drive my personal vehicle to the scene with my fish on license plates. You know, it's...
That was your choice.
If it was honestly close enough, I probably could've ran there if I didn't know where I was going.
No, I meant the license plate.
But it was one of those situations that I, if it wouldn't have been active, I, or if it would've been active, I would've, I would've had some issues. And now with having the Charger, I take that home at night, I leave my Explorer at two seven two with the PD. Justin comes, he gets that at night, uses it all morning, I bring the Charger back, I park it, I drive my Explorer to him there. So at least if something happens, I have a vehicle that's not my own. Justin wants days off, I bring the Explorer home.
One other question, is the grant that possibly you would get, something that will be applied for in the very near future, and is it a matching grant?
It's already applied for.
You're just waiting?
Just waiting. Both of them are.
That's a hundred percent funded.
Oh, there's no matching? Awesome.
These grants are fantastic.
That's one of those things.
These grants are fantastic. They're very generous.
Instead of each year putting our hand out, we wanna, we wanna make the effort. And if we get denied, these, next year, I'll probably have that on my budget. It'll be, you know, the fifty, seven thousand dollars more. But at least at that point, I can say, hey, we're trying. We're not just having our hand out expecting you guys to supply us with what we need. One thing, I did have two on the DARE program. Now, is the city gonna provide this?
No, that's, wait, Justin, or Justin, Bill said it would take about that much to run the program here. It comes only from donations. Right now, DARE is only funded by donations.
I just don't want that added into my...
Yeah, so in our revenue code, you'll see that same number as revenue coming in.
It is that, into your total because it's a police department expense.
But it doesn't cost the city anything, no.
But it's still an expense in the police department.
How we did it, Mike, is in our revenue side of the budget, we have that ten eighty coming in.
Eighteen hundred?
Thank you. And then it's a wash essentially. So it's gonna look like it's in your budget, but it's not a direct expense to the city because it's funds donated in.
But we don't make revenue for any of the expenses.
The city then spends specifically for the DARE program. So that number here is a part of this number here.
So it's okay.
Because I was gonna say, if the, you know, if the city thought they had it funded, they don't have to because the community, I mean, as soon as we put it out there, we were wanting to start the program, it was funded pretty quickly. So I think the community enjoys being, being a part of that.
Yeah, we're glad it got started.
Thank you, Mike. I appreciate your, your squad.
We, we try.
Would you expect an answer on the grant for the cameras?
For the cameras, I believe is October, depending on how good a rally it is for body cams. Could be pretty quick.
We've been in queue for that for a while now.
Yeah, and I, and I talked to the agent in charge of the body cam grant, and, and that, that was the answer. So we just waited for the pot to fill back up. Then again, when we go out and do our job and we get traffic stops, we get into the marijuana, we get into the guns, all that goes back into that pot. So the more we contribute to that pot, in the end, we're gonna have a better chance of getting more grants. This year, we might get body cams. Next year, we apply for it for whatever we, we feel that we need. It, it's kind of a recurring grant that if we work hard...
Radars or any of that?
Yeah, we continuously apply for it.
That's a big part of this grant, it's for drug deterrence, drug.
And we've, and we've made quite the impact on, I mean, we'll never eradicate it, but we've made quite the impact.
They're, they're waiting for the pot to fill back up, but as far as the people that are applying for the money, there's a pecking order there. Since you applied early on, you're at the top of the pecking order.
We've been told we have a good shot. Been in contact, I'm, I'm, I'm not sure that we, that we actually won't get it.
It's like we moved to the airport.
I guess Nolan's speaking me out.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you for your time.
What do you do from Portland? You can tell by all the good questions you have.
All I definitely appreciate, and any further questions, my door is always open.
Pass on to your guys, we thank you.
Hey, I definitely will.
Thanks.
Here on the hospital.
Yeah, I hope you got more back.
Sixteen. Thank you.
We'll see ya.
Let's keep it on the table.
Ed, would you like to start off with the one you prepared first?
Yeah, I'll ask you. All right. First, I'd like to make a little short update. The council members and that chose to come out to the airport last week. We have thirty-five piece aircraft up from five, six years ago when we had eighteen. We have seventeen people on a waiting list for hangar space. That has gone up monthly. There are people wanting to move in from Iowa, Kansas, Nebraska, Montana, or Eastern South Dakota. Custer and Rapid City. They prefer Hot Springs over Custer and Rapid City. Rapid City has a control tower, which the pilots don't like to have to fool with. Custer has crosswind runway. We have guys now from Custer that come down here. If we had a twenty unit T hangar, at a hundred and seventy-five dollars a month, the revenue that we would get off of that, our present hangers would bring in fifty-eight thousand, eight hundred dollars a year income off of this hangar rent.
Can you repeat that? What did you just say? How many that were looking at a hundred and seventy-five dollars a month?
That's a twenty unit T hangar. Last year, I was asking for a ten unit, but with the raise and the people interested, a twenty unit would not be a question. Hot Springs, airport is basically being a highway into Hot Springs for businesses. People come and look to put a business in Hot Springs, they're not gonna drive, they're usually gonna fly. So then we have the Liflight, we have one of them, usually once a month, if not more, saving lives, hauling people out, patients, and boring. We have the Fireplane that's based here in the summertime. So far, this year, they had eighty missions taking off at Hot Springs Airport. That's a hundred and sixty-eight takeoff lanes at the airport. And they use...
That's just a C plane?
Yeah.
And we had up to four planes taking off and on, taking, runs out for fireworks. So it's been a busy year. With the airport growing at such a fast rate the last couple of years, my question for new people are, how am I supposed to maintain and keep up the quality of the airport and improve it? Well, with year after year, the budget keeps going backwards. With that said, I guess you can look at micropos.
In your full time, right?
Full time.
Were you were...
Well, there's a clarification there. The airport hours for most of the year, it's, it's Monday to Friday, eight to five approximately. And then going into winter hours, it's eight to noon. So he does work year round, but during the months of December, January, December, January, February, it goes eight to noon. So that's how this time has changed. We do have that factored into the personnel budget for, so you get the airport.
But you're on call?
It's a hundred and ninety-three summer days, so to speak, if you have winter days.
I missed the earlier today for the revenue figures from the airport. And did you conclude the rental or the, Missy, what they get from the hangar rentals and what?
Yeah, I gave you all of it.
That was it? So it was about?
There were four different revenues collected from the airport that we looked at today.
Right, which came to about what?
Actually, right here, I believe, this is from twelve to fifteen, so thirteen, fourteen.
So thirty-one thousand.
As you can tell, Ed's telling, I mean, that's, proof is right there in the numbers. We are increasing the activity out there. We do have a demand for hangar space.
Our grazing lease really went up. And that's not two thousand sixteen year to date either because that's, you're not gonna get that in...
No, that's correct.
The grazing this year.
What you're seeing increases is hangar, hangar lease.
So it takes...
Sixteen and twenty-three, and then the grazing lease from two, about two thousand six, four, three, nine.
Yeah, but that's...
Did you refresh my memory with the grazing leases again? I forgot. For the cows to graze on it?
Yeah, so the airport, airport property, Ed, feel free if you wanna explain the airport property a bit further.
Is that the hay ground?
Hang and then also...
Inside, we have a wildlife fence out there, and inside the wildlife fence, we hay it every year and put it out for contract bits.
She's asking about the grazing lease you have with Gary Robinson?
Why was that down this year? You were...
Because he only grazed this, and he grazed this for a week. There was nothing in there. We basically, we, so he didn't get much, any forage off of that.
That's where we run the, I'll go ahead, Ed.
This, this year, a lot of the getting hangers is contingent with Peatland and Sons, which may and may not fly. Peatland, if they get the contract, they're gonna mine from here, units from here to here first, and this will be the last that they do. So I figured they might as well get something out, so we put it in, crushed the wheat grass this year. So we can either lease it out for grazing or hay, so we get some revenue off that next year.
Now, it should be noted, there is an investment to develop it to be farmable ground.
Yeah.
Your time, wheat spraying, and again, your time after wheat spraying. So there's a point where it becomes a cost losing proposition to farm out there all the time.
Yeah, out this area, roughly a hundred and four acres, and is now pretty sudden, definite with Peatland, so it's going back to weeds.
We have a signed agree, there's a definite, they're just waiting for some red tape that they have to go through, but we have a signed agreement with the city's entered into it.
It's not a proposal, it is a signed agreement.
Yeah, and the FAA legitimately has no reason to not permit it to function. It's just we can't guarantee the FAA's to act a certain way. We do have that agreement in place. It's signed by both parties, city and Peatland and Sons, and it's subject to FAA approval. That's where we're at right now, is the FAA.
Awesome.
But I think FAA trumps there.
It's not saying that they are going to mine it right away though, so I'm, I'm concerned that...
They'll pay us right away though.
But, I mean, for this ground to be...
They'll, they'll pay us right away. That's the biggest thing that matters.
And right away meaning what?
As soon as the contract is approved by the FAA.
When they get approval, we, we get our...
Which would actually go back into revenue.
We made twenty-two hundred dollars selling our hay last year. We have, what was the, we had one dig when we went out to contract for hay, and one, we had to take, what he offered, and what was the split? Seventy, thirty? So he takes seventy, we get thirty.
Usually it's a sixty, forty split.
You can't say that because we have no other people interest.
Right.
So if we say, oh, we got taken, it's...
We got Sambers and move heads, and this guy grinds his hay, so the cow will pretty much eat everything. If you just put it up as hay, there's gonna be a lot of goheads and Sambers that the cow is gonna eat because it's not ground.
Could you go back to that revenue screen again, please? Thank you.
Is there totals, summations in there?
The airport's kinda like a police department. It's not a money-making department. It's a community service for the public.
I think you're making good money, yeah. Actually doubled your income or your revenue in, what, three years?
Concession sales.
Right.
And can you explain why the concession sales went up significantly?
Yeah, I keep the fire pilots supplied an ice cream bars.
It's an expense, right? That's an expense. So that mean we're buying more ice cream bars and sandwiches?
But if you wanna move ahead and look at micropos.
So Ed, to give further context, Ed put this together, and then after that point, I went out, met with him, went over it. We itemized wants versus needs versus what we can actually realistically do. And working together, we came to this. Now, obviously, Ed prefers his over this one. But this is where we're at.
We might prefer yours.
Ed, do you have an estimate on, on a twenty unit T hangar, the cost of something like that?
A ten unit at the time was three hundred thousand complete. That's ready to move plans.
Are there still state grants available? Because there was at one time, if we had a certain amount down, there was like ninety thousand available or something.
Every airport in South Dakota usually gets a hundred and fifty thousand dollar AIP money, airport improvement.
We're spending a million on our parallel taxiway. That's already one point one. So that's already been approved.
So when you do a project, you have to wait three years before you're eligible for another?
That's, has the state ever funded hangers?
Yeah.
They have funded private hangers?
The big hangar.
Yeah, our big one was mine.
I'm sorry.
But was that because the fire, the fire plane? Was that because it was for the fireplace?
That helped, yeah. See, last year, I tried to get the city to not, kinda guaranteed twenty-five thousand dollars. And I was gonna go before the state, or the county's commission to see if the state would give us a low interest loan for the balance, and which would be had to pay back with the revenue coming off the T hangers. But the city didn't have it in the budget to, to do it, so I got shot down.
Why don't these pilots build their own?
Yeah, we could put together an option.
Airplanes are like any, golfing is expensive. Airplanes are expensive.
Well, it's expensive building them a garage for three hundred thousand.
The revenue model for airport owner construction, it pays off in about thirty years. So you're looking at a very long-term investment to do something like that.
No, but did, the pilot, didn't the pilots build one of those hangers out there? Isn't it old?
He sold, he sold because he couldn't recover his costs in a manly, timely manner.
There's a difference too in taxing. We are not taxed and the pilots are, if they own their own. And the county doesn't come out and do anything for any of it.
Yeah, it'd be our lease.
They don't take care of anything out there.
We don't have to pay the lease because it's Sound City property.
Stupid question, could you get a used one?
Used what?
A used hangar?
Or you get structure?
It'd cost more to buy one and tear it down and have it shipped.
Oh, just asking. If other, if other ones are cozy down there, airports, I used to know.
Okay, item one salaries. I'm all approximately seventy-two acres inside the wildlife fence. And that takes me from Monday through Friday. And then come following Monday, I'm starting all over again. So I'm requesting for summer part-time help, two days a week, minimum wage eight fifty-five, it comes to just under two thousand dollars for twenty-eight days of summer help, which like now, I'm behind on weed whacking, touch up paint, little odds and ends, plus meetings and doing office work, et cetera, et cetera. I just, I'm getting behind. And you're gonna ask, what am I doing now? I have a lot more in the old man's year.
And if you were to be gone on vacation or whatever, or what do we do? Nothing, right?
Call home.
Honestly, yeah, you call, you call city hall. It's doable.
Call city hall, is that what you said?
Yeah, you post the hours of this and this, the airport manager is on vacation. If you have any questions, contact city hall. Those who need access to the terminal can still do so from the outside. There's a porta potty for them as well that we pay.
The only thing is, you know, people come in with courtesy car, or if they have problems with the fueling at the time, I'm there to help.
It's good that you were there, but it was proposed to this council several years ago, or a different council, that we have an unmanned airport, that we not...
For further information, this position was contracted out, the airport management. Since though, at the time, Ed is hundred percent correct in the fact that since he's taken over, the quality of the airport has improved. Comments from airport users are all very positive whenever we're out there.
I'd rather pay you than buy a hanger.
So that's, that's, that's proposal for salaries. If you look at the budgets in front of you, it does include that in the overall budget.
Can you explain why the egg supplies are so high when we're in airport? I don't, why would we spend eight five hundred dollars and see if there's a reason and if we didn't know it?
The egg supply is what I came in for, is the farm ground, if you could go back to the map.
Why do we call it farm ground?
Cause it was farm.
It was.
Yeah.
And we also have irrigation that we pay water rights for.
What number are you looking at?
But we don't use it.
What number are you looking at?
This is on Ed's budget.
It's on his. And I'm in the airport one, it is in, um, four, two, six, six, zero.
I was trying to find what.
We're just jumping ahead. The egg suplex, you wanna go back to the map level, please? Uh, since I haven't heard anything from the contract on Pete Lean's, instead of letting this go in the weeds, I'm telling how many years it will be before anything settles.
I thought on our contract with them originally, we, they said they were gonna take care of that.
When the contract's in effect, they will.
And they have permission.
I just put in if, as an if.
Okay.
Uh, I needed to seed that and put it into the alfalfa pressing weed. The seed is eighty-five hundred approximately, plus or minus. The disc and drill, it was thirty-six hundred, or thirty-three hundred and sixty dollars, plus or minus, to put this all back in the grass and hay.
How many acres is that?
It was roughly a hundred and seven.
And then would that be grazing lease we get off of it, or hay sale income?
If you hay it once, you could graze it in the fall, hay it in the spring, graze it in the fall.
And the hay is just seventy, thirty, and the grazing is, depending on how many, he leaves them in there? It's not guaranteed, the grazing?
You put it out for leaves. I got people calling me, they called City Hall, and then they called me about the hay that's out there that wanted to buy the hay. And I said, no, I gave the guy his number and all.
We could.
Yeah, it's ours to sell. He offered us seventy, thirty, if we wanted to sell it to him.
Sell back.
He did, we don't, we need to talk to them. We don't have them call him, because it's.
We still are.
Yep, still are hay. If they wanna buy it for more than he would give us, then we sell it to him. Yeah, we don't know, we don't have to go through him. That's not the way the agreement was. They could, he could buy it, we could sell it to him for seventy, thirty, but we don't have to.
Put the option to sell that.
So let's call them back and see what they're offering us for it.
Well, he didn't give his number, he was just driving by.
So it would be a lot, twelve thousand dollars to get it all set up and, I'm not a farmer.
Yeah.
Do its thing, and then we're gonna get our, our recoup back when we sell it. We're gonna get seventy, thirty, which is two thousand dollars, is that? So what would the benefit be then to put that in and not ever receive anything out of it? If they're gonna till it up anyway, then what's the purpose of it?
You should, you should've gone out and looked at the weeds.
You've got.
Plus, they're gonna tip it up. That's just my question, I don't know.
Andrew, that, so you have a labor cost involved too, that's outside of the investment cost. I, yeah, we've raised a similar conversation.
Approximately five hundred and four acres out here, and, so like I say, like this can't let that go to weeds. We don't have the equipment to cut six-foot weeds down, and if you disc them in, it's just drilling, uh, discing the seeds back in the ground to create more.
But if Pete Lean is gonna go, come in and dig everything up anyway, it would be cheaper, it would be cheaper to do that than to, to put all this work and money into it for nothing in return.
That's, just like I said, it's an if, you know.
Can we check on our status with Pete Lean?
We, we know, we have a meeting in August with them to continue the contract forward. We have a document to complete by the FAA. They had a setback with their drone that's supposed to do aerial mapping for them, but now it's been corrected. We have a meeting in August.
At least we know that.
It's not doom and gloom, it's, it's still hilarious.
We haven't heard anything for a long time.
What purpose is that?
That's why we didn't, we didn't seed this year.
Yeah, it's.
It's still a loss, yeah.
Right, but I'm just saying the land in general, after we make what we make from Pete Lean and.
You know, Pete Lean said it'll be all level to where it could be irrigated.
Yeah. Then you can get a hanger.
Yeah.
That's a twenty-five-year contract, though.
Sorry, she's got some comments.
Give me a break.
The thing is about seeding that in to where we can mow it and graze it, is even if this thing comes through with Pete Lean, that doesn't mean that they're gonna start digging tomorrow.
They have twenty-five years to decide to do it.
They would have to care for it immediately.
Their cost and their.
They'd have to care for it immediately.
Yeah.
And it's hard.
The contract goes into effect after FAA approval.
Right.
When the contract goes into effect, the terminology states they have to care for the land they're leasing, so it'd be on their, their terms then to maintain it.
But what he's saying is, it's not going to be dug up immediately. They don't have to mine it until they go.
What I'm saying is.
They have to take care of it.
They have to take care of the top with soil, but as far as mining it, it is not guaranteed that it will be done.
We are guaranteed payment, though, on that schedule.
Yes, we are, but I'm not, I'm just saying, the land will not necessarily be destroyed.
And we're going back with saying.
But they have to.
We wouldn't have to take care of it.
That was something we were very specific about.
Would the expectation be that they would go in and, and seed, or they're just gonna maintain the weeds by, by?
It's not by, it's not by, but I'm just saying, we basically weed control.
They have an agricultural person that takes care of it.
So I see them as weed control. Once they fully mine, we claim, then it'll be redressed and then come back.
That's one thing we're gonna have to get clear with them is, Danielle told me that they have two people that maintain the weeds, so hopefully they keep the word and keep the weeds down when we do get there.
In the contract.
Secondly, uh, there is, if they do get it, if they're gonna be good neighbor policy, and they say, okay, where we're not mining, you could go ahead and graze or put it up for hay, and that revenue can go back to the airport, so.
That'd be a pretty good gamble.
Yeah.
I mean, that's about accessibility. If they're mining cells here, working this way, their road access.
We got gates down here, though.
Yeah, I, yeah, that'd be, that'd be a gamble. Ed, look at it that way.
So it'd be nice if they did, you know, so.
And then we had somebody who wanted to, or is it pay it? We had people competing for it. That'd be real nice.
That'd be a secondary contract, though.
When the FAA, you know, come in and say that we need to clean this up, cause it's a hazard.
It's outside of the wildlife fence. They don't care, right?
Yeah. They do care.
Oh, they, yeah.
Sorry, can you repeat your question?
That's why we can't, uh, put in Sudan grass out there, because it's a wildlife tract.
But they, weeds, they, like, what if we sold it to someone else? Did they tell someone else they, what, they can't have your thing?
They would suggest, uh, that's one reason.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
This guy here went and put in alfalfa.
Well, maybe someday we might put in more runway, maybe we can't just do weeds.
Well, we don't get any land. We're just sitting on the gravel, and when it's all over, it'll be back nice and flat.
Oh, nice.
And smooth.
Fifteen foot deep, but, fifteen foot deep.
Right.
Ed, I'd like to ask Andrew's question a little differently, I guess. Uh, we spend twelve thousand dollars, you're right up, to grow a product. I don't know what that product is, but grow something that is gonna be sold by later date. What's the maximum return we could get on that twelve thousand dollar investment?
Well, it depends on your, if it's wet, it'd be dryland crop, you know, hay, alfalfa, pressed wheat mix, and depending on the amount of moisture we get. This year, we didn't get that much, so we only got like seventy-five, eighty bales compared to the hundred and something last year.
So in a very good year, what would be the maximum that we would get out of a twelve thousand dollar investment?
I'd say we could get two, three hundred bales out of there.
And how much per bale?
I don't know what a bale.
Yeah. Right now, right now, uh, first cutting alfalfa is going for a hundred dollars a ton.
Are you still talking over my head?
One bale.
We spend twelve thousand dollars, they, they farm it, they do whatever. What are they gonna write us a check for? What's gonna be the maximum amount that we would expect off of a good product for a twelve thousand dollar investment?
Well, we made sixty-four, six, six thousand four hundred thirty-nine in twenty fifteen.
Two different, that was from grazing and.
Revenue.
Yeah.
Like I say, it's really hard to put a number on, because of the moisture content that we get each year. A drier, you're not gonna get a ton each year.
What is it today, for six months, what did they get? Revenue from grazing?
How much did that hay cost?
She has a number.
I don't know how much a hay that was. I have the revenue, airport.
If you were to go buy a bale of hay right now.
The more rain we get in the spring, the more hay we get off of.
Other side one hundred.
They've got one thousand fifty dollars year-to-date on lease revenue at the airport, one thousand five hundred. But we have those bales of hay sitting there, but we haven't had an answer how much each bale of hay is gonna be worth. And it's thirty percent of what it's worth that we get, cause we have someone else bale it up.
But we'd have to do that anyway, to keep the weeds down, so.
No, you don't have to bale up weeds. We would have to pay, we'd have to mow the weeds.
I mow the weeds.
You can mow the weeds, you can suppress weeds, you can burn the weeds.
That area, if they have a hundred and four plus acres, uh, for me to move is what the tractor I got in the back wing will work. It would take five, six days, eight hours a day running, cause it's only, you know.
One of the things Ed and I talked about was having the volunteer fire department do training exercises, wildland training exercises, burning the weeds. That'd be at no expense to the city or minimal expense to the city, and it then resets your.
Yeah, I don't know how good that is for flying in, though, if you've got smoke on your runway.
We reduced it last year. It's just too wet to do it last year.
Yeah.
Notify.
Fire department couldn't certify.
Yeah, yeah.
Let me know, cause the trap club needs to be burnt too. We could just burn that whole hill.
All right, so are we ready? Ed, you wanna go through this, this a little more? We have time to pick up pace a little bit.
Yeah. What I'm asking for is, uh, kind of bare minimum, you know, I'm not asking for the world. And just trying to keep our standard up and improve the airport for what it is and what it can be. Professional services, that's ten thousand dollars for wheat spraying. Building repairs, uh, new windows, turbo pink windows and gutters, and replace the rotten boards that are there now. Equipment repairs, that's on our tractor and moors. The tractors in need of new front tires, cause they wear out faster than backs, because of the weight of the lower and the snowfall on the front will wear out faster. I don't know, the big, and tires, so.
Speaking of the equipment repairs, it looks like right now you're at a hundred and four percent of your budget, um, and this year you're asking for nine, or, on here, pardon me, on the, this one, on yours, you're asking for fifteen, five thousand. So from the prior years and what you're doing this year, what more do you plan on doing to eat up that five thousand?
That's what I was.
The tires?
The tires, the mounted tires, if they come down to city shop, I'm gonna get the city shop to do the maintenance. Just changing oil, replacing all of, uh, filters on the equipment. Every other year, like I told Misty, I like to have it, uh, just run by computerized, just like cars are now. Every other year, I like to have it put on the computer, just to make sure everything's running properly and nothing's gonna be going to heck and create more expense. The tires are seventeen hundred and thirteen dollars, or eighteen hundred dollars, and it's over right now. Fourteen hundred fifty-eight for the tires, ninety dollars for mounting, and a hundred and sixty-five dollars for mileage coming down, taking them off and mounting.
And that would be on top of the nineteen hundred, which is then kinda where you're coming to your five thousand.
Yeah, that's part of the five thousand. And the rest are forward repairs, blades, et cetera. Sidewalk repairs, we had two hundred dollars in our budget this year, which will not cover the sidewalk. We have cracks on it, patching it with a patch.
And the, the spraying of the weeds?
Yes.
That's the professional for ten thousand? Is there anything that the city can do to combine, like the cemetery and the?
We usually do, and the spraying of the weeds, and that combination hits around the terminal and a little bit along the runway. I think this ten thousand is a much larger application of weed spraying. Ed, do you wanna touch on where that ten thousand you thought would cover?
It includes the farm ground out there, ground inside the wildlife fence. People over here, Mr. Hoser, to take. All this area here. Comes across here, goes up and around. We spray for weeds, it's sandburrs and goheads, and that's how come we're only getting thirty percent of the hay crop this year, because of the weeds and the content in there. He told us that, once we get them under control, we'd get normal sixty, forty split.
The problem we're facing is ten percent versus ten thousand. It's a pretty good size difference.
And the airport's been, you know, on the city's back burner for years.
It's a million-dollar project right now, and we just finished the master plan.
I'm not saying, no.
We just finished some particular changes.
Yeah, so the weeds have just exploded out there. Is why we're trying to get them under control.
So the.
Yeah, cause, yeah, I see what you're talking about, but then you can bring up the price on that.
Some of those weeds are hazardous to the tires, if they get on the line with it.
Yeah, and goheads, so. New numbers at the airport.
Why is your propane so high? We've got twelve thousand, no one has nine thousand.
Well, I just trying to guesstimate, uh, winter time propane usually goes up in cost.
Were you using, is sixteen, what, thirty-five hundred, and you think you're gonna use nine thousand dollars in propane?
I'm just guessing.
I mean, you're saying twelve. I mean, that's a pretty.
You'll see, across the border, propane prices this year have been a lot better than previous years. There's a lot of cushion there in multiple budgets. Ed's biometas have a good amount of cushion in there too, but we can't really guarantee the actual price of propane. What we can do is buy off-peak and get that discount, bulk buy, keep fill, and save on that. So you'll see that similar savings in other departments. We just can't guarantee that we'll get ninety-five cents per, um, price this September or last September.
Propane projected.
It's supposed to be low.
Uh, well, it's higher than it was last year.
Yeah, it was one thirty-nine.
Yeah, based on years past, but there was an increase on pre-bike prices.
And we had estimates that ranged, we were area developer, it was from ninety cents to a dollar eighty or so.
I think they've been going one thirty-nine now.
That's what we started out with, the, the average user was that rate. We get a better rate than that.
Yeah, I know, but I'm just saying, that's about where it is.
Yeah, that's about where comparable to last year, a little bit increased.
Um, fence repairs, there's approximately, excuse me, quarter mile fencing, uh, from airport property to Gary Roney's. That's never been fenced. If it hasn't, it's falling down. Gary has his half. Right, Gary, Gary has fenced up to here, and we need to fence that area there.
Is there any danger of animals getting in? Well, we're fenced around the, uh, by the.
Gary's just been pre-grazing, yeah, I figured out. We should have a boundary set out there, and we can't waste that pasture in the springtime. Maybe the gun club will release it.
What part of it?
It's there right here.
So I got it.
Yeah, we have money, no problem.
I got fifteen hundred dollars down for that.
You're lucky.
Join the club.
Called the people that, uh, put a bid in to see if they would guarantee their price this fall that they gave me this spring, which is under a thousand dollars, and they, they called back and said they'd do it for that, so that's nice of them.
Why do we need a fence there now, and we have her forever before? Why do we need a fence there now, and you have a forever before?
I think all the supplies, they just went up a hundred dollars, and I'm pretty good considering. This, we don't have that.
It's the same, six and six.
Granitorial, that's, uh, some of our supplies, for the terminal building, others, that's where the port body ran away, and garbage pickup. Minor tubes, uh, thousand dollars. And one's at eight hundred. Hay supplies have been over that gas, oil, diesel, that's fuel for the tractor, moors. Signs, I've got five hundred. That's for any signs that we need, they, uh, at the airport. I like to get one made and talk to the state, and it's up to us. Past the terminal building, the fence line, it is, uh, aircraft movement area, and they suggested put.
So people can walk out onto the runway, or at least they know.
Yeah, so the, John Becker said, put aircraft movement area, unauthorized personnel only, or authorized personnel.
We have that cheap sign.
Yeah, we have that pretty.
Yeah, almost a parallel taxiway, it's gonna be more active closer.
Travel each year for the conference, uh, one year they do it West River, and next year they rotate to East River.
But Ed can fly.
You'll see we did increase that in your budget to six hundred to accommodate that East River Conference.
Have a way East River this year. Telephone. And just going from what this year is in the budget and electricity, the same propane, this, this is when the inflation is all, is doing.
Don't pay any water out there?
We get, I'm not sure how many gallons, uh.
Pretty good amount, through the, and Tim, you have that contract, either Far River Water Users District grants us back water usage at the airport.
Oh, it does? I knew that we got our water from, not from us.
Yeah.
Then we got a old well that used, uh, water lawn.
Oh, we do, oh, okay.
Propane machine, uh, underground sprinkler system. Casey gave me a bid at that twenty-six hundred, I'd like to get it done in-house. I've had a hard time getting, you know, people out to look at it. It's, saved me running back and forth when I'm mowing, you know, to move hoses and body, all of this stuff.
Some large of an area, yes, Ed.
This area here?
Yeah. First sprinkler system.
Nine thousand.
That.
There's the building.
Yeah, there is a building, so.
Probably three, four times the size of the building. And, that's, uh, as dry as it is, that's the only area that really watered, you know, keep it, keep some of it to the problem.
So after, yeah, after we've met together, then we've met, got it down to this figure here, of course, I would prefer the alternative. Any questions, Brad?
Any more questions?
The, um, building repairs, Ed, your number is much smaller than what's on the proposed budget. Just looking at the, the terminal out there, uh, you know, the gutters, and there's holes in some of the gutters that paint isn't gonna fix. There's holes in some of the soffits that paint isn't gonna fix, those kinds of things.
That's why I got fourteen thousand for next year's budget. Uh, my proposal is to, uh, get energy efficient windows made and.
Could you do just the gutters and not the windows?
Yeah, could some of that be done this year, because you have forty-five hundred approved in your budget, this year you've only spent fifty bucks.
So we have, we're about to at least, do a full painting, caulking of the, the gutters. What you haven't seen is, we have not yet tried to fix the gutters, seal them, so that's our, our, this year's project, is to seal the gutters where there's those leaks, replace the rotten wood where it's infiltrated, cover it with new paint, and continue on. For the windows, scrape the caulk off the existing windows, reseal inside, outside, those are things we haven't done yet that we need to do.
Yeah, because you've got money still.
We do, in fact, we bought the caulk already, or bought the caulk.
Yeah, I'm caulking now.
Jesus Christ, it's out in paint.
And this Saturday, they're painting, if anybody wants to help?
If not sooner, yeah.
If not sooner, yeah. I got paintings being mixed tomorrow.
About what you're seeing is us not, proposing not to do the windows, do new gutters, instead fix what we currently have.
Because you have the forty-five hundred in the budget already?
Yeah.
Is there a, um, a plan in place of how you want the, the overall, um, start over? If you had to forecast, not forecast, I don't know, I bet it works since six this morning, I should just not talk. If you had to, um, choose a project and plan a project for this year, next year, whatever, and, and project what you wanted to be done, um, versus, I mean, I, I get the windows and, you know, the sprinkler system and stuff like that. You know, do you have something like that that says, you know, this year, this is what I want? Council, I want sprinkler system, I'm tired of moving hoses, this is what I want. Versus that and all of the, I mean, I understand that all of these would be ni- nice to haves, but.
I'm not gonna hit you.
But I mean, I mean, this is so much improvements that you're asking for, and I get that, that probably needs that, but what is your number one improvement that you would want out there? Other than a hangar?
We could get one there, one there, we could grab this one temporarily.
What was the first one?
What was the first one?
The part-time help.
The part-time, no. Andrea, I asked a very similar question to that, and that's the answer I got, so that's why we're looking at including part-time help.
Okay.
And it was twenty-seventeen budget.
It might be hard to find.
So you put that in the budget.
I put that too.
There's, like I told Nolan, a lot of these school kids aren't that ambitious yet.
Couple days a week.
Couple days a week, or retired people, you know, that want this.
Oh, that's why it's too busy, so we, yeah.
And.
Oh, excuse me, I thought you had these people, you've never had these people before.
Oh.
We've always been a one-man operation out there.
I'm sorry.
Just this year.
Well, he had an assistant for a while.
Yeah, they traded off shifts, yep, so it was a one-on shift.
So, airport is basically a one-man operation.
We'll hire females, it'll give you a, a lady operation too.
One staff.
With the underground sprinkler system, with your up, updates of your windows, um, for the rest of your funds for this year.
The windows, uh, we could get by another year, with the windows.
We could buy a timer for your sprinklers, and then they'd go off, you wouldn't have to run back and change one.
Yeah, and the gutters, uh, they are in that, should be replaced. And at that time, do the gutters, we could do, replace the rotten wood.
This year, if you spent your four thousand, five hundred, you could probably drop that to ten, your building repairs.
Why don't you pull up your other budget? You can kind of see what Nolan's saying.
Even if.
And the sidewalk, I can.
Well, I feel like it would be better to complete a project versus have so many wish lists, at least you can start checking them off your list and be like, this is what we did last year, this is what we did like this next year.
That's what this year, the terminal building is, we sealed the window, not yet, we sealed the windows, we fixed the leaking gutters, we painted the exterior, painted part of the interior, that part's, that, that check is made then.
Why were the two thousand fifteen building repairs so out of line with past shoots?
I wondered that too.
That was.
Fourteen thousand. What was done in two thousand fifteen?
Oh, for.
Fourteen seven?
This number, fifteen seven?
Yeah, I mean, you've got fourteen, you've got fourteen seven in, in two thousand fifteen, and you got twenty-nine thirty, and fourteen and a thousand and thirteen.
Yeah, Misty, are you checking that, Misty?
Put in carpeting and, and furnace.
Carpet and air conditioning.
Air conditioning.
Is that in the bathroom?
It says carpet, new carpet, and air conditioning work. I'm not sure, I thought carpet was before my time.
That's an awful lot for that. If I just read the fourth.
Carpet's only been in there two years.
Misty, what's that?
Is that part of your doors? Automated doors on one of the hangars or something?
Building repairs, yeah.
Oh.
Well, we had old sliding doors on the old hangar. Had four sliding doors that people were getting their fingers pinched in that. And we put a hydraulic door on there, which was a great improvement, pilots said spacing there appreciated it. We, we were paying seventy-five dollars a month, and we jack it up to a hundred dollars a month, recuperate that.
What's interesting, Ed, is.
Seventy-five dollars is all?
There's how many planes going?
There's six.
Well, what's interesting, is that'd be about, looking at this year's projections, that thirteen, twelve thousand dollar expansion, twelve thousand minus this number, it's pretty slim budget that year, sixty-four. Did you buy hangar doors?
It was your big paraleft door, twelve thousand dollars. And we just sell.
This year, here, the reason was so high, uh, city built, uh, hangar for the fighter club. We're getting five hundred dollars a month revenue off that. Hardly set them rates up, after their contract is up. Myself, I believe the rent should go up.
When is that, was it a thirty-year contract?
Five-year.
Oh.
Five-year lease.
When's that up?
Should be two years. Three years.
Two or three.
Yeah, two years.
So we're trying to run, get things on the level out there. Without going overboard, I, George is our airport. Pays on, and, uh, one of us, over by the tractor shed. This asphalt here is all cracking up. Contact with Pete Mean and Son, uh, all this area here. In the slide hangars over here.
For this map was shot.
To put a three-inch lift on this, they said it was around twenty-five thousand dollars. That's one of the things I'm gonna wish was for the future.
Can they spray into the gravel on it?
Well, I'm, I'm gonna spray the cracks where the grass is.
It keep it from breaking up, yeah.
Yeah, another thing later on, by the big hangar. A lot of this area in here, I'd like to get concrete pads, so when we move airplanes out, we could just bring them out here. Instead of putting them clear over here. But, that's just wish lists, you know. You wanna know how I wanna improve the airport. Projects, that's, uh, a couple of them.
So you could do a yearly, like, year ritual on the wish list for us, and that would work, that would satisfy Andrea for sure.
Well, we also have a master plan.
There's so much, like, I just, I just don't know where to.
But the master plan, have you looked at that?
I mean, realistically, Ed, we're talking about Pete Mean and Sons going into effect, hundred thousand dollars, ending over ten years, priority number one is hangars.
Yep.
And after that, you start looking at making these other improvements.
The hangars, you know, brings, brings revenue in, it brings people into town, they spend money in town, hotels. Well, if there is two hangars, they're local, so.
And we can't use any of the money from Pete Mean and Sons, it has to go back into town.
Right. So.
Any money on the airport has to go back to the airport.
It could support you for a new year. It could support you for a new year.
Hopefully, uh, if we do get the Pete Mean some lease, the FDA won't deduct our hundred and fifty thousand dollar AIP money every year.
We don't, we don't know that, though.
Not for sure, no.
I have a question, not regarding the budget, there are bleachers standing out by the, um, by the airport, who do those belong to?
They were salvaged, they were, uh, drag race, they were trash.
So, did you salvage them, or did the city salvage them? Well, the one, the one isn't bad.
I don't, and, uh, for most of the fairgrounds, they were either bleachers, and they sat there for years. Just like there's tires out there at the drag club hat, yeah.
So they did, it belonged to the city?
No, they had, uh.
Oh, they're yours personally?
No, they were the drag race.
Okay, long story short, the gun club would like one if they are.
No, I don't need it.
Oh, you did, oh, I thought, no, they were, okay.
And this, if you know anybody who wants tires, big tires.
Oh, yeah, there's some giant homes, actually, there was a lady looking for tires, yeah, on Facebook, okay.
No one told me I could get them, wait, anybody that wanted them, I could have. Mosquito hazard, you know, what's not. Any other questions?
Thank you, Ed.
I appreciate your time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ed.
Have a good evening. You want me to bring a case of beer to them?
Yes.
Supposed to me get the ball.
Can you, do you notice any windows that got damaged?
I guess we're gonna take the revenue next, for other reasons, it'd be nice to get someone with the way through the revenue today. And I'll just, uh, take a minute to explain that, um, I, Caroline thought this earlier, but, oh.
Just one other thing.
Should've gone to the Gmail account.
Any folks who wanna come out the airport and have a good tour, real free.
Gives a great tour.
We'll pay goodbye. Now, hit your budget, your, your time's good, anytime.
The only thing is, it gives you a ride, and the pickup and the front wheels do this.
I'll say that, or he'll want a new pickup.
You'll see a number, and we go through.
They did manage to get him paid, they helped, we could give you a ride.
When we go through the revenue projections, you'll notice, um, a number of ch- uh, changes to the codes, the revenue codes. Um, that was to match DLA recommendations. So as you're looking and we go through them, Nolan will bring one up, and the number will be for the twenty-six, twenty-seventeen change. And if you wanna look at the history, you'll have to look at the old number, 'cause I can't change that in our accounting system, the history stays with the old number. We're gonna start using the new number effective this year, so if you find history, you'll have to get old one. But, the, the new budget authority's gonna be in the new number, and the reason we did that is for our annual reporting. The, DLA wants everybody to use the same numbers as much as possible to make the reporting consistent and concise throughout all the different municipalities. So we might have a quick question about what changed on some of those. Are we gonna go through revenue, try to get through revenue tonight?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
So we're gonna start on page one.
Alright, so council, do you want to take a, put the.
Yeah, just cause we need one.
Okay, do five, five minutes, we can be back here, I guess, at eight, eighteen, up to the spot.
Yeah, just the first page and the first one.
Oh, it'll be revenue, that's expensive.
So we're gonna start with revenue, try to get through revenue.
Fertilizer, natural fertilizer. Uh, this is on this.
Go ahead and ask her if that's.
This is my bedtime.
Well, it's pretty collected, you collect it, you just don't see that.
Well, here's an example of why this is something, is.
I mean, we should move faster after, because we shouldn't have any more speechless.
At the same time, you'll automatically change this, our overall value.
The first year I was there, we had to sit here.
I might have seen it, and I did one, but I got it.
Because we're like, we're leaning, we're moving, and it's great, you do it.
We're collecting for the state, so it's actually like.
It's sort of like, you know, I walked, it was so heavy.
Honestly, it should be a lot of, this is the new center budget, other than the chart, the new center budget.
Well, I have another.
Well, I have another one.
Well, because I worked for ten years in state vet's home and I was always starting my business.
And so it'd be twenty-four through the year and it's twenty-nine, then, and this is thirty-four, so this does include that two thousand percent.
Nolan.
Yes.
No liquor and beer licenses, I don't understand that's probably got a big payment we got.
Yes.
Right. But there's still seventeen thousand, it's a lot higher, are you expecting to sell more beer or something, beer licenses?
Seventeen versus previous years. A little bit. I think it was based on, you take the forty-five thousand payment, subtract. Revenue. So Misty contacted the Farber County's office and we were told that this is the amount that we were permitted to take. And that is without going back. Now, I know last year we talked a little bit about going back in years and collecting former, but the last time that was discussed wasn't very popular, so this time it was not considered in this figure.
Didn't we agree to do the one year?
The current, current year.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what this number is here.
Okay.
It's current year. And CPI, Misty, is?
There was no CPI this year. And growth hasn't been completely determined yet, so that could go up just a little bit. There's something that has to happen at the county level before they can finalize it, but that is their best testament of what the total amount we can collect this year.
It's changed drastically because they have reevaluated a lot of property.
And ours turns out slight uptick.
Yeah.
Ten thousand.
So the net effect of that is something.
Pretty sure.
Yeah.
The net effect of that is some property owners will see an increase in their taxes.
Not because of us.
They might see some increase, but there are some that might see big deals, you see too.
Probably a reassessment.
Yeah.
We're not, so I mean.
That's separate of us, yeah.
We can have that retracted in this year.
They start doing it.
Residential is this year, commercial is now this summer.
Oh, sorry. And remember, we pay taxes in the years.
Now, this figure here encapsulates these below. Fairly conservative estimate. And whenever Misty and I were projecting these, we love to be more conservative, we don't wanna forecast such a.
They're already late.
Rosy scenario.
They're gonna pay there.
Yeah.
Those are people who are behind and their property tax is making payments.
So the mobile homes, is that what that is?
No, that's general property taxes, all others.
All others.
All other years besides current year.
Okay. Is included in the?
Thirty, thirty, okay.
The general sales and use tax, we estimate to be nine-twenty. Now, this is two-thirds, one-third, is correct, Misty?
Yes.
So, look at previous years, it's been better than that, and it could be better than that this year, in fact, it's looking pretty good this year. So we have ticked it by ten thousand. If it exceeds it, that's fantastic, that's more of a revenue collected that goes into our reserve funds. If it's under that, well, at least we're not that far off. Usement taxes, based on previous years. A lot of this is based on previous year's data unless there's been some major change.
Notice I can tell that's a special tax that people with video lottery machines have to pay for permits each year and we get remitted a piece of that. So they have to license those, and they have permits to be able to.
We have had an additional two locations for this. Liquor beer licenses, projecting seventeen, based on this current year and then also previous years, yes, it's been this amount. We do have.
That's what I was asking you about, why did you up it to seventeen? Did you have a note, no, no?
No.
Yeah, I have an estimate that we've prepared on the new businesses that are paying for liquor licenses and how we got to that figure.
We've got a couple more than we did before.
The VFW is active again. The licenses are active again.
Yeah.
Okay.
And it has the.
And the reason that sixteen is so big, if you remember, we sold that liquor license for forty thousand dollars, so that was an anomaly.
Yeah, I'm thinking of new liquor licenses that are new licenses, it'd be, be a daily bread.
Daily bread.
They did renew the point, even though it's not active, it is renewed.
It's now for sale.
Yeah.
The daily bread is?
And Red Rock.
No.
That's now.
Pistol patties.
They do have a restaurant liquor license, so active, but the city, they have to pay on it.
I think they sold the restaurant.
What's that?
I think they sold some of the restaurant equipment, so makes it a little more difficult for them to put the food.
Looks, looks nice inside, though. And also the additional bourbon left.
Yeah.
Animal licenses, this is a number we like to see increase next year. We believe there's more animals in the city not being licensed to constitute that number, it should be higher realistically. So that's a public awareness campaign, some more pressure from our ACO to get this number higher. It should be based on the animals I know that turn in the city.
Could we put something in the paper, the first year to remind people?
Yeah, we could do kind of exactly that with PSA, yeah.
Get your new licenses.
City licenses, again, fairly conservative there, and then ask them to do some other years, but not too great. Building permits, projected down somewhat from these two years. If we exceed it, that's fantastic, again, it's revenue for us. Then blank out these. We have the bank franchise tax, and Misty, that's being remitted to us, correct?
Yeah, I actually called the state when Nolan and I were going through this, we saw we hadn't gotten it yet. We looked, in previous years, we always get it in like February, March, so I called the state and they said they remitted it to the county and the county is the one who sends it to us. So I called the county and they said, oh, we already sent that to you, and then they called me back and they said, oh, we did all the paperwork, but we didn't remit it to any of the municipalities in the county. So it's coming, it'll be in our next remittance from the county.
So if Misty can get thirty-four dollars, no doubt she can get handguns back from the state. Okay, a lot of these are funds to keep back to the city. They're pretty standard, pretty fairly predictable. This one may be under projected, but if that's the case, it's revenue back for us. Looking at year-to-date, where we're at revenue to this date, it should exceed this number, but that said, it's not a guarantee. But the previous, though, we should be in good shape for this twenty-year projection.
What's your liquor tax revision?
It's a reversion.
It comes from the state, it's part of a state remittance, it's a percentage that we get back from liquor tax because we have to deal with all the associated events that come with that, so.
If you've only received twenty-four percent this year, fifty-six hundred, why do you think you're gonna get up to twenty-three thousand?
It's larger payment at the end of the year.
Later payments.
And there's a quarter that we, there's three quarters that we haven't gotten yet, and it's typically terms of quarterly payments, so we did look at that. So you get that based on the liquor that's sold in town, or you get that based on, what is it based on? I could research it with the state, it's exactly what the percentage comes from, but it comes straight from the state and we don't really have any say in it, they just remit it, you ask them to get it.
So they kind of take care of that.
Yeah, similar to this number here.
Yeah.
What's the Berkside Evans, that six thousand four?
We, we get payment in lieu of taxes, but their audits have to be done before we get them. It's been very inconsistent when we, when we receive that money, because they, their audits have to go all the way through the process that you see how long our stays. And then they go back and determine how much we get, what our payment in lieu of taxes is calculated off of an amount that's a final audited amount. So in one year, in two thousand, I think it was fifteen, we got payments for like twelve, thirteen, and fourteen.
In, in this book, there's nothing, there's just a six thousand. There are no numbers.
Where are you looking?
Uh, three, three, nine, oh, one.
Turn on the back page.
Oh, I didn't read that one yet.
Okay, so it's over there.
Thank you.
It should be said, the line above, we have the library allotment at twenty thousand, we requested more, don't hold breath.
Have they even agreed to the twenty?
Not at the moment, no. They haven't gave announced really any of, not requests yet, but historically, it's been twenty. I don't see it going below twenty, ideally it increases, but it's not a short.
On the line, on the one other, does say that we did get it.
We got it in two thousand sixteen.
Yeah.
Now we're wanting for seventeen.
No, she meant we, we get seventeen, the twenty, the middle of twenty seventeen.
Okay.
We, we asked the county to up that.
We did.
Okay, when they said.
We haven't said.
They complained about us building in the library and we left.
The monstrosity on the hill.
When did you ask?
During their budget hearings.
Yeah, June.
June. They complained about the library.
Yeah, we reminded it was paid off.
It was unpaid, huh? I didn't see that. I don't believe in that.
And it wasn't all the commissioners, it was more so one.
One.
They don't live in town.
They don't live in this decade, apparently. It's been done.
Careful.
It's been done, we have, we bought it, we paid it off, it's been done. Now we're trying to operate one of the state's best libraries.
Forty percent of the car holders are from the county. And they pay eight percent of our budget, the library.
They're not projecting a good sales amount.
Bankers more, they have to fit.
Yeah, that's what they asked, one of them asked us to do that, is charge county residents more.
Or they kind of implied it.
Not the best, yeah.
This cable TV franchise, there's zero there, but there's. Yeah, that was one that changed, just like the library allotment, so you'll see the twenty thousand for the library allotment down on the next page. And the cable TV franchise changed to three, six, nine, ten. That's one of the ones I was talking about earlier that you see a change. And so that one has sixteen thousand this year, but no history, and so you have to tie those two numbers together to see the history in the projection.
Misty, reimbursements? We have a supplement.
Yeah, reimbursed, like, I got a scholarship for finance obstacle, Kim got a scholarship for her spelling, thank you. Thank you, this school she went to.
Is there a health insurance reimbursement?
Oh, what?
An insurance reimbursement? This number is pretty large. It's not eight hundred dollars.
The twenty thousand, right.
Three, four, one, five.
Oh, and all the payments that we get for the police that are outside of their contract that pay us back, and then we have a couple other judgments against people that are supposed to be making payments to us, including that very large one that we just won. And I can go see what the history of it has been, but those are the kind of things we stick into reimbursements. A couple light poles we had damaged and people had to, their insurance companies had to pay us for that, those kind of things going there.
On the Golden West patronage, is that just paid later?
Yep, that's, I got the notice today that those are coming in, you know how we all get those checks, so does the city.
It was a little bigger than mine.
We pay them, they figure them a phone bill.
Going down to rec program fees, we did see a nice increase in this, we did tier pricing this year for the first time maybe ever, most in a long while.
Did you skip over all the little ones?
Yeah.
Okay, unless anybody wants to.
Unless there's questions.
Other was one, I had a question.
For eight thousand, then three thousand, then one thousand.
Yeah, what was that?
Which other is that, three, two, nine?
Three, four, two, nine, nine.
Two, nine, nine.
Three, four, two, nine, nine.
We can go back and look at what we got in two thousand fifteen for that. Does this French restaurant not have a liquor license tag board? Nope, those are, that's another one that changed, all the liquor codes were recommended to change to three, six, eights as opposed to three, eights, so all of those have been reclassified.
So why does it have to change it?
Um, because the, the codes, they prescribe those, so if it's liquor, they want everything to be three, six, eight, at every city, so that when we report it, everybody knows what number to go to to look for those things, and we weren't following that, so we cleaned up our.
What was miscellaneous revenue under libraries, I can't see the number on it.
It's. What line are we on?
Yeah, I don't know, I can't see it, it's torn, it's right under thirty-five, four hundred.
It's under libraries.
Not where it's copied?
Uh, it just says miscellaneous revenue. No in it, maybe it's library fines, that's it, it's four thousand, okay.
Yeah, I'm sorry, after I put these in the books, I realized that some of the pages you can see.
I think that's the only one that's.
So are we good to go down to the libraries then?
Sure.
Yeah, did you have a rec program please? We're getting increased, we really need to find ways to increase our revenue without really hurting, and it looked like our attendance was up and so was our revenue, so.
For summer rec?
Yeah.
Yeah, just for comparison purposes, our rec program is ridiculously affordable, based on other communities.
Yes.
Five dollars is our minimum charge, it goes up, virtually about fifteen or twenty at the most. But in perspective, other places, it's eighty, eighty-five for one activity. That's lower, some are hundred, hundred fifty, two hundred activities, that's through city government, not just private, private groups. We understand our demographics, we like our accessible prices, we do think a tier pricing is the right way to go, you know, the cost of doing swimming is not the same as doing volleyball, so.
Or art.
Yeah, well, art's actually pricey.
Oh, it is now?
Materials and art, and volleyball and like football, those are very low-cost options, but yeah, you have art, you have swimming, you have golf. Those are the big three, I guess.
Is there a reason, I think I've been here, my kids have been in it for the last, well, ten years, and I think it's always been like five dollars, like everything else goes up.
It's been like five dollars since the nineties, I believe, maybe.
Has there ever been any discussion on increasing it?
We, we this year did increase it selectively, and based on feedback, it wasn't negatively received, only negatively received, so we're open to continue to adjust it.
We also added tax, this time they used to back tax hours for five bucks, so we didn't really even get five bucks for it.
No.
We got minus, yeah, so the tax was thirty cents on five bucks, but.
That's a good question, or some things are like that, even bigger, broader scope, like our water utility rates, they've been set for so long, it'd be nice to look at modifying if we wanna do these other projects or keep talking about these expenses being our expenses, but there's, it's always so long, people, eyes kind of roll when you make changes to small amounts like that. It's like our trash service contract, we were in for about nine fifty or nine dollars, went to ten fourteen, and it's a leave the number there. And that little amount, you'd be surprised what people, how they respond to it.
Set budgets, they have to.
Well, I just think you can't go anywhere with that.
Nope, you sure can.
For five dollars.
It's a great program, those kinds of things, the city is proud to offer.
All right, in the libraries, you know, we're looking at year-to-date, fines, collection, copies made, cards issued, we're doing really well for revenue there.
We had no idea prior to what we do.
Very true.
And fines got renumbered. And it's out of the sequence of libraries because DLA has a special number for library fines.
The DARE program, this is where Chief Close pointed out that eighteen hundred number, we do have that showing's revenue coming in, so that's essentially a wash when it comes to that expense. Let me break into our collections of, our tax collections of alcohol sales, we do have the VFW on there, and this is zero. Here you'll notice that the grocery stores obviously have the most volume. It's the biggest takeaway, I guess.
And yeah, you, you'll have a harder time comparing year-to-date numbers, 'cause we changed the numbers on all those, but you should be able to match up the names. And the other sets of numbers are in that three, eight section, and you won't see any year-to-date amounts there, so that'll help you match them up. And again, we're real conservative, based on year-to-date numbers with our projections for two thousand seventeen.
And we'll see more revenue being received in throughout July and August and September as our summer busy months take effect, but right now, it's, the numbers don't look great for alcohol sales.
So, Fresh Start does the summer alcohol?
Yeah. Hey, Fresh Start has, yeah, one of the biggest sales, the gas stations and the grocery stores.
I was just looking at that first year, that must have been before they did it.
Yeah, I think, what was Fresh Start, what did it used to be?
Roosters?
Roosters or Roosters?
It's on there.
It's on there, it's on the second page. Shows the history.
I think it's a little bit twelve.
Twenty thirteen.
Thirteen, and it may have been, yeah.
Yeah, it might have been probably.
In our.
Or a different number or nothing.
And this, this goes back to continuity, the better we keep doing this, the better we are to predict future numbers.
And then you don't only hold so much data, you can only have three open years.
So we're, we're sad here.
That's too bad.
Yeah. But we always have our printed reports.
Yeah, we can back up print them.
But these are nice, 'cause it'll show more.
Do you think backups in the center? Okay, so you could actually pull back.
Yeah, we don't say backups from years and years ago, so.
Any questions on the alcohol?
Data by law.
Nope.
Okay.
Do you keep your access?
They have the Mueller Center building rents, we have seen increases in that year-over-year. We're on a good track this year to increase from last year, but still we have sixteen thousand budgeted last year, sixteen-five for this year. Bending commissions has increased, this is mostly in part to our new contract in place with.
Yeah, we're moving around because there's our renumbered and yours aren't.
Oh.
So Mueller Center building rent and Mueller Center bending commission. So, um, Mueller Center building rent and Mueller Center bending commission, the old numbers for those, um, building rent for the Mueller Center, the old number is three, eight, four, one, zero and three, eight, four, two, zero.
What page are we on now?
Well, you kinda gotta go to the number. If you wanna see last year's number, look at the old one.
Okay.
Nolan's got the number for the new one and that's where we budget it, is in this new number, the three, four, six, which is higher up.
You dive a little bit deeper in the Mueller Center rates or the rents?
The operating transfers in the two hundred thousand, that is from.
One hundred water, one hundred wastewater.
That's what I thought, checking.
That's not the right expression.
Can I ask you a question about this two, one, one fund, projected a hundred forty five thousand, but to date, it's just forty two percent of that. Do you think you'll, you reach that number on July?
We just started collecting July one through July twentieth, I got note that it's coming in now.
Oh, you, we're okay?
Yep.
That's, that's one of those that's lagging behind the actual calendar here.
And this is our big time.
Going back to the Mueller Center, this gives you an idea of Mueller Center revenue over time, thirteen, fourteen and fifteen, between building rental and concession sales. Another positive trend we like to see, granted, it's only thirteen thousand still, it's in the right direction.
Yeah, we're getting tighter on those too.
Yeah, we, we've done quite a bit of improvement down there, I mean, we've got new tables and chairs and refrigerator and dishwasher and stove and ice maker. I mean, we've put a lot of money in it, so it should be coming up.
Charge for that equipment, we have a list to charge for the use of equipment that we really haven't been doing in addition to the rent, so we hope to see that.
I think it's like the, the airport, you know, the Mueller Center and the airport, they don't, they don't come near to, they're not gonna make any money ever, probably. What I think we need to be pulled down.
But we can always try to increase our revenue.
That's right.
That's one way we did this, we have this new itemized schedule, so if they select a room, they can also add on packages. We want a scoreboard and power strips, well, now we have additional thirty dollars.
That's good.
We have the airport revenue projected next year, being at capacity makes the rentals pretty easy to project. We have cemetery revenue from the sale of lots. Caroline mentioned the operating transfers, our water and wastewater does generate enough surplus profit that we take from those accounts, transfer into our general fund to supplement our general fund, the two hundred thousand dollars. Some may say this is a good idea, some may say it's a bad idea.
It's confusing in a way, 'cause it's not necessarily money that we are bringing in, profit, but it's transferred from another department.
It is profitable.
Well, it's profit, but it can't come from a different department.
It does, though. So, it's profitable in those departments respectively. It can either go into that department's savings account or it can be transferred around. It's been often transferred into your operating one-on-one fund, that is a fairly common practice.
I did ask at the budget.
If you're looking at utilities, whether it be power, water, wastewater, they generate good revenue for cities, that's how they supplement their general fund. You look at.
They have big expenses too, that's why we put that money aside for them, right?
Yep, and they, they do have profit that goes back into their.
Public, you know, we're taking money from them and our general fund and then we're gonna raise their rate, so there are people in the public that don't quite think that's right.
And, and that's an argument people make and the response to it could be, well, you're paying to have police services, you're paying to have library services. So, we're taking a hundred thousand dollars and it's.